I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amendments to the agenda.
Yes, there were one of them. Hopefully under new business amendments add Ruby's Bistro water allocation to the.
Ruby's Bistro water allocation?
It's an allocation request. Okay, I entertain a motion. Make a motion to add under new business Ruby's Bistro water allocation request.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That is officially on the.
Do we have anything in executive session tonight that says blank? No? I would like to make a motion to amend to add a brief discussion on personnel. It's one VSA three thirteen. Second.
Are you okay with that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, we almost made it down. Okay. Anything else amendments? Meeting with renters regarding water shut off. These renters from, I assume we're talking about the, the, uh, trailer park.
They would be invited, yes, but, um, yeah, just in general, any renters who would like to come and talk to the board.
Is there anyone here for that business today or?
Any renters? Nope. Usually there's none.
Right. I was gonna bring one thing up. I know that there, this, this issue has come about a few times. And I was looking today at the procedures for water issues like this. Is this something that normally would be directed to you and then you would bring whatever proposed agreement the renters want to make to us for approval or is that now?
No, it's the, it may even be state statute where the renters have to make the agreement with the.
The policy.
Right. I understand because they're not the owners, they would have to make it directly. Understood. Alright. Has anyone contacted you with any interest in, no?
Have you sent notices out? When did, when did they go out?
Yes, they went out two weeks ago. Yeah, no, plenty of time to.
So when, when will the water be shut off?
Water will be shut off starting next Tuesday, not this Tuesday. That's when water shut off start.
So, August?
First.
Oh.
Yeah, today's the twenty fifth, August first, water shut off start.
If you don't mind, Joe, do you know about how many people are affected by this? If you think, and obviously we have no idea who exactly is living there, but.
I honestly, I don't know how many people. It's, it changes. There, it was upwards of three hundred people who hadn't paid back when we started the process with the pink slips. But that number comes down as pink slips come in and red slips go out, so.
But that's, that's everybody in town.
That's everybody.
Okay, got it.
Three hundred people will not have their water shut off because you live very small.
I was gonna say, it's a small, it's a smaller number, but three hundred people aren't.
No, no.
Are, I guess, uh, my question is the, uh, the folks at this trailer park, are there people there that are in imminent trouble?
Um, no, they're okay for right now.
Oh, they are? Okay.
Next quarter we'll see how that looks.
I kinda assumed that's what this was all about, so I never asked. Okay, well, uh, they should know it's coming. Alright, uh, approval of the minutes for July eleventh.
Move to approve the minutes on July eleventh, it's written.
Second?
Second.
Additions, deletions, corrections? Nope. All those in favor?
I got one.
You didn't see this?
On page, on page two, um, about two thirds of the way down. It says have applied for a five hundred thousand dollar mine's undergrad research fellowship. Um, it's not MRF, it's, or it's not MRF, it's a MRF. And so I'd like to change that to, um, and that's a municipal energy.
Resilience.
Resilience program, yeah.
It's W E R K?
O E R P. Municipal, okay.
Everybody okay with that?
I'll, I'll then motion to, uh, correct, um, the, uh, the, uh, errant passage cited by the town manager, which changes MRF to MRF, N E R F. And that's municipal energy.
Resilience.
It changes it to MRF.
M E R.
With a P.
Let's get our acronyms all figured.
Okay. Bad amendment?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? By the way. Okay. Five minutes for public comment. The public here? Are you guys here for some?
So a gentleman goes ahead or he's sorry, go. I don't care. Helen was first. He was in here first.
Oh, I just work from town.
Oh, okay. Norm Badness, Luke Badness is father that was in here a month ago.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. I watched video and I just wanna emphasize a couple of things that were already mentioned. I'll do it real quick. I just wanna emphasize something. I know that there's a lot of issues with, uh, how much we support the kids in this town. I know that you think it's a budget issue and I know everything you do is a bunch of issue. But when I go to West Brooklyn, I go to Pittsburgh, I go to Proctor, I go to Chittenden, I go to Brandon, they all have budget issues too. But they put so much more into their kids than I think we do. Two examples I'd like to mention that I think emphasize how little we put towards our kids. Josh, Luke, couple others, had to buy all the equipment this year. That's, that's just not right. The, the parents shouldn't be buying the baseball equipment. That just shouldn't have to happen. No equipment, no teams. He may be allowed us to be able to play, believe. The one that really, I think, emphasizes how little concern we have for the kids in this town was the bathrooms. That was a common decision to shut those down, knowing that's where our kids play basketball, that's where they play tennis. During the day, that's where our rec is, that's where the rec, where the kids is during the day, that's where our little league is. As Luke said, we were sending little girls into the woods to go to bathroom. We were telling visitors from other towns they had to go up to Dunkin' Donuts to have a bathroom. And this shows, I think that's a classic example of how little we care about the youth, about the kids.
I wouldn't characterize it as that.
How would you care?
I wouldn't characterize it as, first of all, we didn't know that any.
That works.
I know. I agree with you. But it's not that we don't care, it's that we have, we have X amount of numbers. We didn't know what, what a, uh, heck, I, you know, you live in the past and I had no idea what a catcher's equipment cost, but. So we budget accordingly what we did before. Come to the budget and see how we agonize over fifty bucks.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And I don't, I bet you, you'll see the same thing in other towns as well.
I couldn't agree more. That's what I just said. Every town has to agonize over budgets. Every single town agonizes, just like you folks.
It's not like, it's not like we're signaling, we're signaling out, out to kids. We don't, we don't intend to do that. We don't intentionally do that.
Okay, but it is.
To be, yeah, the bathroom, I, I, that's unfortunate.
How would you shut bathrooms down where kids are playing baseball?
I don't know what happened there. That's your feeling.
Yeah, this, uh, Mr. Badness, this has, uh, the select order really can't take blame for that. This is one hundred percent my fault. If someone should take blame, that lands right on me. We didn't know the bathrooms were broken. We couldn't get parts and it's not an excuse. We should've tried harder. It's summertime, we should've done that. I agree. Our, our best option is to get the portable toilet. I can tell you now, I got somebody who's gonna go fix it and I got somebody who's gonna help clean it. It won't happen again.
I just, I just pictured those, those were both mentioned last time, but I thought they were kind of blast over. Every single town has budget issues. Every single town. And thank you for fighting with us, okay? I thank everyone of you for doing the job. You come down here, you work hard and you gotta wait for people like me to come down and complain. I appreciate everything you do. I really do. But I just think there's gotta be a greater commitment to the youth in this town.
I, I, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
What I was gonna say is, I, I don't think it's, as Bob said, I don't think it's a matter that we don't care. I think it's a matter of prioritizing things. But that concerns me as well and, you know, obviously as many of you know, I'm pretty new here and I'm learning a lot every day. And after, um, again, the others came last, the last meeting and kind of gave us an education as to what's going on. It really, it stuck with me the trouble of it because, you know, one of the things that you, and when you are part of a governing organization, you have to focus on is, you know, what can you do that will benefit, you know, as many of your constituents as possible? You have to look at a broader picture. And I think that I did not know how many kids participated in, in rec sports here. And when I heard the number, I mean, I was, I was really kind of, I was shocked because with that kind of participation, that should be a high priority. And while obviously I haven't been a part of it, um, in the discussion until recently, um, I, I can't agree more.
I think we're both set. We're all saying it's gotta be prioritized.
I, I agree. And it's like, and, but the thing is that just saying that is not enough. I think that really it's, and I know we have, we're, like, we're working on a lot of, like, projects for the future. But this is something, this is a problem that exists in the here and now and, you know, it can't go on forever. So I, I will, you know, I'll commit to you that I will do my best.
Thank you.
To, to try to do something as, and I hope that the rest of us will as well.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to say, I'd like to say something. What, what exactly is these bathrooms broke that is so hard to get to fix? That's what I'd like to know.
The toilets. Toilets are special toilets, like what you find in a RV. So we've been having difficulty getting those and then installing them. It's not just, you know, we got DPW guys that fix roads. We need somebody that can fix a restroom trap. And again, I'm not making excuses. This lands squarely on my shoulders. I should've tried harder and that's what it boils down.
That being said, probably as soon as we realize that if we're broken, the supportive bodies down there, at the very least, every, to be there for, to get.
Sure, I agree.
And I, I, I didn't like when I heard it yet, but that was sickening to me to hear that. I did not realize that was going on and I apologize also because that's just not right. Not right at all.
And I think it also, everyone should realize. I, I think everyone should realize that, that if, if something like this happens or there's another issue that, of this gravity, please, someone bring it to our attention. I mean, you know, you, you know, you know where I live, Norman, and so. And just have, I mean, we need to know about it like as soon as possible.
Luke came up after a couple of weeks of doing it.
Right, so, I mean, but yeah, I mean, if, just make sure we know about it because, you know, I, I don't wanna let things like this ride for long periods of time.
Are there some others? And there's more here. I wanna, I wanna hear some.
I'll speak now about the bathroom issue, which is a huge issue and it is, honestly, it's an embarrassment to our town and our community for that. I'm Josh Markey, by the way, I own a couple businesses in town. And, um, as a kid, that place down there was, it was kept up very well. There was a snack fire down there. There was nice bathrooms, nice facility. Eventually that, that, that little area, I guess, burned and nothing was ever done instead to rebuild. Um, my son now is eleven. He'll be off to, to do the middle school and high school before he's going. So he won't be benefiting from any future projects so much down there, not, not a whole lot down the road. But we've had a chance recently to go play some Little League baseball tournaments in other towns and stuff in the area. And just to see what, like Norm Badness was saying about, you know, every town's got their priorities, their budgets and everything else. That's, those ball fields are their towns pride joy. They have tournaments and, you know, they're fifty dollars a head for kids to enter and twenty teams come showing up. They're, you know, they sustain and make money with the concessions and with all the tournament fees and everything else. And they're beautiful. You go there for the whole day, you watch five, six baseball games and, you know, you get burgers and dogs and, you know, there's a hundred people around. Then you come here and it's just, the lot has a wind mode in a week and a half. There's no bathrooms to use. You can't get a drink. You know, it's just, it's pathetic. It's absolutely pathetic.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I don't wanna take the blame for this. I'm not, we're not gonna take the blame for this. I'm, I'm getting a little bit, it always was, the, the feedback came from the, from the people that were down there and we're not hearing that. The first we heard about it was Luke. We had no idea. We, we looked at buying, first, you should know that when those burnt down, we looked at putting a new building in. But we have to do it according to federal regulations with flood, with the flooding down there. So we had to put in this, it would've been an outrageously expensive building to put in, to make it, so it would, would pass all the federal regulations. So we looked, that's why we bought the porta, the, the big fancy bathrooms. We'd like them to work, but, and we'd like them not to be vandalized, which is another problem. And we looked at buying a, a cook shack that could be moved in and out and, and was outrageously expensive. We couldn't afford it. We didn't buy it. I mean, it's, we have to make some sort of, um, priority. And, and if people are willing to take that and, and increase the taxes to do it right, we're willing to do that. But at some point, we sit here in October, November and December and start thinking how we can, how we can not raise taxes. It will raise taxes. It's not that we don't want to, it's just that we, we have to, we have to have the support to be able to do that.
You're saying the town doesn't support the youth?
No, no, no. I'm saying that, that, no, 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 no. It sounds like, what, what it is, is that there, there is a finite amount of taxation we feel we can raise every year. It went up, it went up, uh, we, we generally stay lower than, lower than four percent. We are four, six, nine. It's, it's, it affects people. And so we, we are, we are very cognizant of that. It's not an excuse, it's just the truth.
We're both, we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah, well, it's just a matter of what we put it on.
We want to prioritize our youth and you don't.
No, 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 that's not true.
It's a priority thing.
No, no.
You're saying it's a priority thing.
What would you have us not spend it on?
That's the tough work that you guys unfortunately have to do.
Exactly.
You keep saying it's a priority and we're, we agree with you. It's a priority.
Listen, you can't, as far as I'm concerned, every time there's a kid playing a sport or doing dance or doing something, they're not, they're not on drugs. And I'm, so I've, I've been saying this since you were coaching my kids. And I agree with you. It's just, you'll, when it comes budget time, when it comes town meeting time, you guys gotta be there. You guys, you guys gotta support us if we raise, which we can do. I mean, it's, it's a simple thing.
It's not all about raising taxes.
Yes, it is. It, it costs money. How else would you do it?
Once you initial funds in, wouldn't you think that like, you'll get the money back if you do like tournaments down there? When you bring the people in to spend the money down there, you can bring that as more money back?
And not just down there, but the town itself.
Yeah, you'll get a lot more people.
I would love to do it. I would love to do it.
Especially if everything's going this way to the town. Nothing's happening here. So therefore, people that we bring in, where are they gonna go? They're gonna go around the park to, you know, Liberty, um, our new restaurants and things like that. We don't have anything for them to come in for.
I've been sitting here listening and I'm not gonna try to make excuses. I'm as embarrassed as you are of how we ended up down there this summer. So I'm not gonna try to give excuses. But I am, I'm gonna say that I, I agree with you too, that we all know we need to do better. We didn't do as well as we could. I'm hopeful at a couple of different things. I think we talked two, two weeks ago about it. And that is, uh, I think what's different from what I saw years ago when it was really pretty nice down there, we had a very active recreation committee. Because we can't, we can't go out and hire people and I don't think you're asking us to do that anyway. But we're, but there's ways and, and that Josh, as you were saying, that the revenues you can get from, from having the events, from selling, selling, there's, you don't have to go to the taxpayer to, to get them. I get that. What we've done and what I, what I heard here was, we dropped the ball on that, on that bathroom. I'm not gonna try to defend that bathroom not being open, okay? What we said is, it won't happen again and it will be a priority. That's what I heard. You can hold this accountable to that. There were a, a couple of other things. I think some of it was, we, we probably weren't doing a very good job of talking to each other about some things. I'm still trying to get my head around, since this come up, about why we rent a storage container to put equipment in for only a few months out, out of the year. How did parents have to go buy all kinds of equipment when I walked upstairs and I had a mound of baseball bats, batting helmets, balls, gloves? I had all kinds of stuff. Now, I asked the question, cause I, I don't know what's going on today and what the, what the challenges are. I've been told that certain balls can't be used. I grew up at the time when you use the ball to knock the cover off and then you use what was left and then you went and got another ball. So I, I get it. But I think we, I watched catcher's gear. We have some pretty good catch, I thought we had catcher's gear, maybe.
I bought catcher's gear, so.
Yep.
We didn't, we didn't have any that fit some.
It didn't fit the kids. And, and I'm saying, when that happens, but I'm going, okay. A couple of questions came to my mind and I know we've been talking about the bathrooms are gonna do better. Talked to Joe about, do we buy a C container or something down there so that, we're not running back and forth. You're looking for equipment. You're, you're going in, you put some shelves in there, you know what you got for catcher's equipment and, and everything. I think there's, I could, again, I could sit here and give you all kinds of excuses. That would, that isn't gonna change where we are. I look for your help with, uh, I think two weeks ago when I mentioned, I really could use a, a recreation committee that helps us, cause you're the ones that are seeing it, feeling it all the time. We do only by exception. When we step in something, we, we hear usually that we, we didn't do that good. We all wanna do what's, what's best. I'm, I'm pretty sure everyone hears it.
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
I don't think you want individuals coming up here, like two weeks ago, us this week. I think some sort of effort has to be made by you folks to form some sort of committee. Advertise it something. Can somebody come here? Uh, I know you have somebody for like four months, but maybe eight months.
Yep.
You could form, if, instead of individuals coming up here with individual complaints, maybe you could encourage or select, and you don't want just anybody, you want the right committee.
It would be awful nice to have a, a nice working committee that would know what's going on down there. And if they have an issue, come to us.
But individuals aren't informed that.
If I can say something, Jesse Cahill, just live in town, have, you know, kids of all ages, high school, middle school, ten years old. So, um, you know, like Luke, like Norm said about the other towns in here, right? Some are fantastic, not much larger towns, very, some are just so-so, but majority are better than down here. Can you guys, as the board, take a field trip? Ask other towns, how do you do it? Research a little bit. How do you guys help fund your rec committee? How do you form your rec committee? How is it handled? I mean, you know, you, you're the ones that, if that is how, how it happens, you create the rec committee. Just do a little research. Castleton's, their, their rec, not facility, but their rec that they have is humongous. You know, they're, what they provide for kids. You know, I mean, Brandon?
Pittsburgh.
Brandon, Pittsburgh. It's just, just a little research, you know? And it would go a long ways. We could see where do we have to go, right? It's not gonna get fixed today, but can we work on it to fix it for the future of this town? Because if you can have good and great rec programs, rec facilities, people are gonna stay. You're gonna bring people in and your kids are gonna be safer. There's gonna be less vandalism, okay? If it's in use down there, if it's in use all the time, there's less vandalism, you know? Where's the research on the building, on what can be built down there and what can't? Grandville, their whole facility flooded from Irene and I'm sure they got some money from that. So that's gotta be a flood zone there. I'm sure it is. How did they do it? What did, did they have to build a building and if they did, how'd they do it? You know, so I, I know it's, it's a flood zone down there and it's probably tough to go through regulations to build it, but sometimes tough, you know?
Well, it was cost prohibitive. You've been trying to, you've been trying to get over it.
I'm sure it was cost prohibitive, but if some people can see that cost and we can say to our community members, you know, we're gonna front this much, how can we cover the rest, right? Like, just don't say no, we can't.
Well, nobody has said that. Nobody has said that to anybody.
I was just curious, I'm sorry, Bob, tell me though. You know, the, the billboards that are, that are there, um, I'm, I'm assuming those are really dated and nobody pays for that sponsorship anymore. When was the last time that was actually funded and, you know, I mean, that is, that is a good way to, to, right? So that, that would be a good way to.
What do you think, what do you think is a fair price for a billboard down there?
On the fence out there.
On the fence.
Probably uses that, thousand bucks a year, probably.
Okay, so how many you get on there?
Twenty.
Twenty?
On the old region.
Well, let's, let's assume we put a chain link fence on the, on the Little League.
You probably have fifteen on there.
At a thousand bucks a year.
For big ones, so there's fifteen thousand bucks.
What, there, there is also.
I just don't know. I mean, I honestly don't know and I'm asking.
I mean, Pond, Pond Hill Ranch up there, they have the rodeo, which is just six weeks of the summer. That's fifteen hundred a year. You know, I got two of them up there, on, around there. So, I mean, they're able to generate quite a bit around that arena, the way they do it and everybody. Businesses love to support kids and the youth if possible. And there are also, there's state grants. There's a matching grant out there right now. If you put up twenty-five thousand bucks, you can apply for it. They might only give you ten, but they, they'll match you up to twenty-five if, if you get selected on it. This is just a little bit of brainstorm. You know, if you, if you have a few nice chain link fences, some bleachers, some places to sit, some decent looking dugouts, some lights up there, you can have some tournaments there and generate, I don't know, five, ten grand a weekend, you know, a couple of times out of the year. Maybe we can raise a hundred thousand bucks to do this and make it pretty nice down there and then allocate twenty thousand bucks a year to maintain it and have the place, bring in the money with some sponsorships, some advertising. I mean, it's not, it's not rocket science. It really isn't.
It's, it's, it's math. It's math and so.
I mean, I'll kick in ten grand myself.
Right, right there, right now.
I wanna see these kids have a place that's nice, like I had when I grew up. It's just.
Well, to be honest with you.
Coaching. Yeah. They never, they just go to coaching, it's this guy. I mean, we have, we have resources. Bob would be willing to help with a lot of the fencing stuff.
Right now, right now, we spend forty-three, fifty-three, fifty-six thousand. And so that gets us baseball activities, it gets us the summer rec and it gets us, um, special events. So that's concerts and stuff like that. So we need to know how to budget more.
Right.
And at, at fifty-three thousand, that's three cents, four cents on the, on the, on the tax rate.
Sir, to your point, you are absolutely one hundred percent right. The bottom line is one of the things that's, that's hindering this discussion right now is we don't have the knowledge and we don't know what's necessary. We don't know what other towns. And we don't know what's necessary. We don't know what other towns do. We don't know how they handle it. And you're absolutely right. Every town in the state, particularly now, after the, the recent weather events, is being pummeled for money, but they still manage to, they find a way. So I'm willing to take that on, you know, it, it seems that, that, you know, it's, that we need somebody to kind of jump into it. I'm willing to take that on. I have time. I can go ahead and I can, I can investigate and I can go talk to other people. I, I need some guidance because I haven't played youth sports in forty or fifty years. And so I probably would, but I'm, I'm happy to do that. I mean, I, I mean, I would rather be able to present something and say, hey, this is what I found out and this is what we need to do, rather than kind of having these discussions about how much does a, a sponsorship thing or a chain link fence cost? You have to look at the whole thing as a ma, as a, it's on a macro level because, you know, that's, that's how the programs exist and that's how they, they run, so.
I have one last question, not a complaint, question. Because some things have been lost in the shuffle, accidentally through the years. When I was involved in coaching down there, we used to have insurance on Little League. We did three months. Last day was August fifteenth, so we would start April fifteenth. I actually had a kid break a tooth. The insurance covered it. We took an umpire out of the year in the nameless one time because he didn't wear a supporter and he took one. And the insurance has covered this. Now, I'm kind of interested in this because like you didn't have a basketball program. So Luke took it on himself to have a, he started up the girls and boys basketball program. If he got sued.
Twig Cantfield used to, Twig Cantfield used to do that.
Yeah. If he got sued, is he covered? If we have an accident down there, baseball field, are we covered? We used to have insurance. Do we still have insurance for these situations?
My gut, yeah, my gut feeling is that our regular insurance, VLCT insurance, VC, VLCT insurance would cover anybody that is working for the town or even volunteering.
Even volunteering.
Sir. This is kind of my bailiwick. I think a lot of you know my stance on this. And I've been, I've been very vocal. This, this is a quality of life issue. So I, I look at it as being a part of, but yet different than simply kind of rendering it a line item budget. I think that a well-formed recreation department can make money. I, I don't know if it will be self-sustaining in making money, but the model is already out there. I, I'm very familiar with what other towns are doing and how they're raising money to, to fund activities for all ages. Not only does it include corporate sponsorships, but it includes grants and, and other funding streams. I, I've said it once, twice even, and I'll say it some more. I, I think the key to this is a rec director who also spends half their time as an economic development coordinator and helping the town to manage grants. And a well-formed recreation committee helping that rec director carry out the projects that we're talking about. We, we have a really good space behind the grade school and if we don't tend to it, it will not be good for long. It is, you do get a little bit of baseball field envy when you go to other towns, absolutely, but you know, they're, they're raising money to do more with their facilities. And I'd like to get to that spot, but that requires some monetary commitments from us. And I appreciate all of you coming in and Luke coming in two weeks ago because to, from, from what I've seen, and I've only been on the board almost a year now, folks aren't communicating what they want to the people that can help make those decisions. For a lot of folks that I've been talking to, it's, that have sat in these chairs, it's constantly, why are my taxes going up? I don't want to pay for anything. When the conversations I'm having at the ball field are, why aren't we investing the money in quality of life improvements? And I fully support the investment in that. And I think there's a way to do it in a, in a financially reasonable way for the town that would require a rec committee and rec director to raise additional funds. That's, that's where I'm at. Those are my two cents.
We spoke, we spoke about, so you know, we're not just pulling smoke. We, we spoke about Chad's idea. Cause it, it dovetails with something that, that Joe needs and, and so that maybe it's a part-time rec and part-time financial guy. So we're, we're, we had, we did talk about it, the same meeting that, that Luke was in here. So we're not, it's not following in deaf ears. It's just, it's how to get there. And what I would, what I would suggest is the budget, the budget season starts in October. Find out when we're talking about this and, and by then we'll have some, we'll have some information. But if you guys have any information, either individual or as a group, however you work it, so we know what we're dealing with. The other end of that story is come to the March meeting because somebody's going to jump up and say, why have you doubled the cost of the recreation program?
This town supports their kid, their sport. You go to a, you go to a basketball game.
Oh, I know. I agree with that.
You go to a Little League game and there's, there's twenty-five cars down there at a Little League game and there's only ten kids, you know? This town is very sports oriented. You just want a sports function.
They are. There's a lot of, no one at baseball.
That, that high school is the centerpiece of this town for sports. It's a.
I agree.
And a high-level rec director that maybe can also, whatever that other part-time position is, pull them together, pay them so they want to stay.
Right.
Will help the town.
I agree.
You can't pay ten thousand dollars to somebody who wants basketball.
We know.
You know, some of the money's going to come to the, from the rec, some is going to come from somewhere else. It's all in the same budget, you know? And that is going to be.
You, you would be surprised. I, I, it. I, I'm a little shell shocked because I've been here as long as I have, but it, it never ceases to amaze me when somebody wants to argue about what we spent. So I hope you're right and I'm willing to give it a shot, but.
Your opinion in the budget is zero, you don't complain.
Well, yeah.
You're up against it. Yeah.
And I will tell you, I will tell you one other thing. It's just personal, but in the eighties, my sister was the rec director one year. The entire rec, recreation department, the, the whole summer program and everything, a hundred and fifty dollars. So we have, we have improved a little. But we've got a long ways to go. Everybody knows that.
Right, I mean, but I do think, well, while I, I do take your points, Bob, I think that quite frankly, we should probably begin exploring this and then investigating it now.
Well, I agree.
I mean, if it's kicked down the road until October and then to budget season, I think that basically we should have the information in hand.
What can be done, what can be done without, down there without the town's program?
That's, that's my next question is if we form, say, a volunteer type rec committee that maybe is five, six of us that might get together twice a month, go over some ideas and some plans and figure out how we can raise money and, and and so it's not so much of, we're, I don't think we're all asking for the town to budget three hundred thousand dollars a year for that. We're, we need to do some major improvements right away and then we need to be able to sustain that. And, and I think there's enough of us people around that have enough interest and dedication and that we'd be able to raise quite a bit of money on our own. There is that, that, that one grant is September ninth is the deadline to apply for it. So this, this isn't something, I, I'd rather not push it on to October and then in the spring we figure it out and then, and then we try and find people to do the work and everybody's all, all booked up and busy. You know, it'd be nice if this stuff was all in motion and ready to go. I did speak to Green Mountain Power and they'd be willing to donate some poles to put up the lights. They'd be, they're willing to donate the wire. I've got a friend who's a foreman there that he said he'd come down, string up the wire and everything else. There, there are resources that aren't going to cost a ton of money. We just have to open our eyes a little bit and try to do our best to reach out to those people. You know, I've got a few guys that are willing to help. I spoke with Matt Thomas, who's phenomenal with this stuff as far as ball fields go and everything else. He's been willing to, obviously it's not free, but come up with a plan as far as what we're going to need to do maintenance down the road every year and how, how it should kind of come together. You know, we've got great people. We've got Bob, who's got the best fence company in the state of Vermont here, willing to, to help out and do what it can, you know? And we've got a lot of great parents that are so dedicated to the kids and the community and everything.
We haven't seen anybody in five years. That's, that, this is great. I mean, it's great.
It was just eye-opening for me and everything. I've heard it from the other parents all season, helping coach baseball and stuff, just going to other towns and saying, why isn't ours like this? Just, just why isn't ours like this? And, you know, I mean, they've, they've all obviously figured out a way to, to make it work. And there's no reason why we can't figure out a way to make it work too.
To tell you the truth, it was actually easier for people to just bring their kids to other towns to play.
Yeah.
That's what it was. I mean, parents are busy.
We just don't know that. We, we honestly don't know that. If we don't hear from people. If, if we don't hear from people, we just don't know.
Yeah. So we had a grant ten or fifteen years ago and put thirty thousand dollars into Allegiant Field. And a couple of years later, it's kind of no good anymore. It wasn't maintained properly after that. You know, and we don't want that to happen again. I, I'm willing to step up and try to find other people to help raise some money and, and put some money into making it nice. We also need the town on board to say, okay, yeah, we're going to be able to keep it nice from that point on, you know, down, down the road and everything. It's just that there's more and more drugs nowadays with kids and growing up and, and it's just bad. And the more we can have for kids' involvement. And not just that, if we can have some tournaments down there and a bunch of other towns come in, they're going to shop at Durfys. They're going to stop at the Wooden Soldier for breakfast. They're, they're going to spend more money in this town. Because just look at Fairingham. We had a great time last weekend down there. You know, they had a place with burgers and dogs and watched some ball games and, you know, they'll spend some money, went shopping on the way home. Instead, what do they do? They go down there, they, they go to their game and they leave town and never want to come back. Right? Why would they? You know, they go back to their field and their field's nice. They come down to us and there's no bathroom to go, you know, I mean, it's just, not to keep rambling on, but there's, I think, I think we could make, we need to make a commitment to at least try and see what we can do. Okay?
Fair enough.
Nope.
Fair enough.
I think a lot of your organization has to come from here. You don't want to depend on eight or nine parents.
Well, I, I think.
Well, you pick the eight or nine parents.
What you're talking about, I, we've got a lot of work to do, but I'd envision it being very similar to you get your group together and you see what things are going. You're, we need to do work. We, we need help from you as well. We also, from a town standpoint, you probably run the budget or, or because once you do concession stands and sponsors and everything, you probably want to have the town with, with the regular accounts and the rec department, so to help, to help you keep track of what you spent, what you need, so you know what you're, what you're asking for. All I ask again though is because some, one of my frustrations was we put money, I hear people having to go like two weeks ago and mow the fields just before the game. Well, we've got money in a budget this year that, that would, the voters voted in to mow the fields. I, so if you need, if you needed the field mowed, before you jump on that mower, I'd be jumping on the phone and calling Joe and saying, hey, I need, I need someone down there to mow the field, to work on the fields. We put extra money. We know we have multiple ball fields down there. I thought there was money enough to redo one field.
Even one?
This, this year. And, no, that's not all the fields, but we're saying, we're fu, saying, after not having any eyes on it at all, saying, let's start doing some, it's that kind of stuff. But do we know what you really need down there? I, I don't. I need some help there too. Joe?
Guys, I hear everything you're saying and I sympathize. I'm, I'm a big supporter of having a rec director. And I'm not the voting number, but this is just me talking for who I am. What we struggle with, Mr. Badness, I hear you, should come from the board. Have the town do this. I, me and my staff have just, we're swamped. We, we've taken on so much and we've talked about this with the board. We've taken on so much that things like a broken toilet slipped through the cracks. Man, we should have ordered that, we should have ordered that porta potty last week. Dang it, it's, it slipped through the cracks. I need your help. We can't move forward without your guys' help. I, I'm not down there with eyes on it. I'm stuck here eighty-eight, you know, forty-four, eighty-eight hours every couple of weeks, stuck in my office. I get out when I can, but the paperwork doesn't stop coming. I got a part-time rec director that's actually quarter, quarter-time rec director. You know, he does what he can. But again, he's not down there enough. We, I need your help. I, those fields are beautiful and they could be so much better, but I need you. No doubt about it. I'm, I'm meeting with Erica from GMP to get like poles down there. But I'm right there with you guys, but I, I one hundred percent, if you guys want to start a rec, a rec committee, I'll be at every meeting. I want to make it happen. Just.
We really do need that part.
I need, I need your help because we can't do it with the three people I have in my office. It's just not enough people. We want to mow those fields, keep them, keep the grass like a, like a golf course. I got one guy that mows the entire town.
It's not his fault. We're not complaining about it.
No, no, I know. I've been, I'm, I'm just saying I need some help too. And if you guys want to start that committee, I'm here with you. Let, you, let me know what days and we'll set it up.
I think, I think we're looking for you guys to help us just form a committee that you think, and then we hopefully meet twice a month, go with some ideas, try to figure out how we can raise some money and, and go from there. But obviously we need the, the town's help.
How about?
In motion.
Sure. How about we?
In your motion.
Do, do you guys want to meet on the second and fourth Monday of every week? Or, you have second and fourth Monday of every month?
It's a starting point.
Yeah.
It's a place to start.
Yeah.
Is that good?
It would, it would be a really big help. And we just, there are things, you know, when, when we're worried about, you know, it, you get overwhelmed by, and you, you get fat, dumb and happy, to be honest with you. You, you think you're doing everything you're supposed to be doing and then, then you guys come in and go, you're not doing anything. But, but we also got, you know, Scotch Hills flooding, you know, so there are other things going on. We're not just sitting around. And so we need the input from, from citizens and, and some sort of volunteer committee, which was pretty strong fifteen years ago. And it was, it was, it was very handy to have because we knew what we were talking about. There got to be some arguing back and forth and then, then it split up and that was the end of that. And back then, I was dead set against having a rec director, but I don't see any other way around it, to be frank, to be honest with you. And, and Chad's idea of, of putting that, that, those two positions together is, is a really good one. But I want to say one other thing. We are repeating ourselves and so if we're going to, if you can get some volunteers, we can't designate anybody. If, as soon as we ask somebody to be on a committee, they say no. I hate to sound, I hate to sound negative, but, but if you guys are volunteers and are, have the energy, come in and do that, we will, we will work with you and we will have something better than we have now.
It sounded like you could have Joe though go on the town website and say, hey, we're looking to form a rec committee. If, if you're interested, please con, talk or show whatever, whatever that is, that would be helped. That's what you're, some of the help that you're looking for from us. And that would, and direction and that seems.
You can start there.
It seems reasonable.
I just, I just would like to say one thing if I could.
I, I don't think so.
Okay. But anyways, I'm, I think this should happen. I really do. I'm not against it at all. And I've said it all along. The bathrooms, I never realized that they were so bad a shape. But if we can't get them bathrooms fixed ASAP, when we have functions down there, get porta potties at least. And food vendors, has anyone thought of maybe possibly coming, getting a vendor or two in there at a percentage until we can get up and running? That would help a lot.
See, they're all ideas.
They're all ideas. And that's what we got to act.
I, I wouldn't, uh, make that decision.
Somebody like John Rowe, when there was, when there was a game at night or something, he could go down there and have his hot dog cart or something else to, and some coolers of cold drinks there for sale and, you know.
That's a good stopgap, but it doesn't allow for revenue.
It doesn't look too...
We're not getting rid of it.
It doesn't look too...
But it's a good stopgap.
Providing a service, they're not providing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is, it would, it would help until we can get something more...
We just made it our bill. I think one or two games, we actually, parents just volunteered and we had a grill out there and we made five hundred bucks.
On a picnic table.
Twenty-two nights, you know?
Right. And I, I don't wanna take that...
And that was just a parent with a regular grill or a Blackstone or something. I think we went out and bought some...
But see, that all used to happen. I mean, obviously, we had the, we had the shack.
When you have a shack, it's a lot easier to, you know, electricity and, you know, some cover and...
I get it, I get it.
That's a, it's, storage, all that's right there, right? Like, we didn't have, you know, we didn't carry Hoover's and stuff like that for that sort of thing, so, yeah.
Even a room off the side or something like that could be used for all your baseball and softball equipment storage, and then you're not running a comics box or...
That's, that's what, that's what happened when we flooded. We lost everything. Pitcher machines, everything, everything.
I know, I get the impression...
But that's, that's, you know, that's just...
I get the impression that we will not have to look hard for volunteers in the community for this committee. I guess the question is, is are we going to give the same level of commitment to the, the ideas and the projects that they are? So, I think that's, that's our challenge now.
Hand up two or three times.
Yeah, a couple times. I forgot half of it, but for you, um, Kathy Jupp, tell us about Cadable Furniture. Okay? She's the one to contact. He's right above Rales. She runs it. She, yeah, she owns it, okay?
Oh, oh, yeah, they don't matter a lot. But I just wanted to give you that name.
Okay. All right. Well, I'd, I'd like to talk more, but I, I think we gotta move on. Uh, the thing to do is get with Joe, get, get some sort of committee going. You, you have our blessing, for what it's worth, um, and we will...
You need your coordinator.
Well, yeah, and we'll get our, get our athletic guy involved with this as well. And the, the other, the other end of that is that we can have a regular meeting, have a regular line item in the, in the agenda rather than five minutes for public comment. So, it's not so unorganized. And we can talk, one, one week, we can talk about starting out, what, what we need to start off with, what the, what, you know, one week can be just pure, what we need to add to the budget, blah, blah, blah. But we can get this organized and, and...
So, would a week from Monday be the first of August, or is it, or is it Monday the first?
If, so I, I have a meeting on the first, the first Monday every month. So, if we could do the second and fourth Monday, which is August fourteenth and August twenty-eighth, and then just rolling from there, second and fourth, second and fourth. And I'll see you guys, what time?
And that'll be here?
That'll be here.
Seven works for me.
Seven's one.
Seven, three.
Yep.
Seven, four, would you, would you be a priority?
And we will have it, we will try to have at least one selectman involved with that. And I heard, I heard a volunteer, I heard a volunteer...
I couldn't do Mondays.
Well, Jason, Jason was talking as well, so...
Yeah.
At least one, we'll have, at least one, maybe two. If we have three, we have to warn a selectman's meeting too.
Second and fourth.
Yeah.
Here on the fourteenth.
Here on the fourteenth, the August seventh, yep.
I think I have a couple of your emails. I'll email you something just as a reminder, and then if you could, blast it out to everybody. Is that, like, I don't think I have everybody's contact. Awesome.
Yep.
Or even to Ryan.
Right.
Oh, he should have it.
Yeah, he's gonna be gone. Have Ryan send it out to all the coaches he's...
I'm just saying, your recreation person.
You know, and he can send it out to everybody there and tell them to reach out from there.
Right.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having the time. I think we went over five minutes. Thank you for...
We got five minutes apiece, though, yeah.
Yeah, divide, yeah, each, each get five minutes.
Have a good night.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I think we'll see you again. All right. Any other five-minute guys? Okay, Department Head reports.
I got none.
You got a, you got a new...
You got a new truck down there?
You got a new truck, we should be...
Truck is here.
Let's go take a look at it.
Is it outside or?
Yeah. Let's go take a look. Field trip.
Do, do a quick, we're gonna take a quick, uh, do I need a...
No.
Quick, just...
The meeting's continuing outside.
We're just going out for a couple minutes.
Park lady should do some fundraising.
Okay, they can do it. They're good at that.
They're punishing, yes.
We were on our way out, I thought. The most important thing.
Town manager, that's the only, yeah, Town Manager report.
Uh, let me give you a couple of, uh, just a couple of numbers from the police department since I, I got you guys. Um, PD's done fifty-seven tra- traffic or municipal violations, uh, this time around, twelve warnings, two car crashes, um, and he's up to fourteen, fourteen sets of civilian prints for the last two weeks.
How many?
Fourteen. From the town manager's office, uh, we talked a little bit about budget with, uh, the folks from rec, but that, that actually starts at the end of August for my, me and my staff, so it's coming up on time. So, uh, budget, budget starts here in, next month. Uh, we're gonna talk about the urban design. I did talk to the state about their urban design ideas for the, the pocket park down the street. I've reached out to a gentleman named Bruce Meacham, uh, for the, uh, to discuss the new town garage, and I meet him tomorrow at nine o'clock at the airport. I finally got a hook on somebody that can give me some hard numbers for the, for the dirt work. So, that's, that's very positive. I'm not sure if I've told you guys or not, but the, we have an RFP out for the water plant roof. That roof has been leaking. Um, Mike did do a temporary patch to it, and then Jake came out and did a little bit more to make sure it wasn't gonna leak, but there is an RFP out for that right now. And there's an RFP out for, uh, the lead line service inventory that the state's making us do. So, that's out.
There's funding for that, right?
Yes. It's a, it's a forgivable loan, but I think we're gonna come in under, our, our loan should be entirely forgiven based on, um, what the cost is gonna be. Uh, restroom trailer. I've reached out to the mechanic down the street at Avalanche, and he said he's gonna take a look. He look, he works on these, um, he works on RVs, so he may be able to have access to parts and the knowledge. Avalanche, I think it's Avalanche Truck and Trailer.
What about, uh...
Dan.
Danny Ray.
Oh, okay.
Let me ask you, has, has anyone examined whether or not it would just be more cost-effective to keep some porta potties down there rather than trying to maintain these? Cause these, these, like, these RV toilets, they're very fussy and they break down and, you know, they're, they're expensive to maintain.
Yeah, I just, I just, I, I kinda agree with Jason here. I, it's a little bit...
This one was supposed to be able to hook up to the septic that was down there.
This, this one is, so for, if, yes, porta potties are easier, um, remarkably easy, um, compared to this. But we're, the trouble we're having with this is the vandalism. Kids will get in, smash them up, walk away, uh, and we don't know about it for two days or until the next time somebody goes in to clean it. And it's like, somebody smashed a toilet here. But, so to the, to the folks that were here, to their point, though, if we want it to be nice, a porta potty will work, but is that, yeah, is that gonna do it for us? And I, I like the toilets.
Porta potty is a stopgap, but...
It is.
Right.
And, I mean, you can find some, actually, they're not bad. I mean, they're, they're a little bit more luxurious these days.
That's what this was supposed to be.
Right, you know?
Yeah. I mean, it, it just, it's been more cumbersome than, than we were sold on. And it was a...
Is, is there any water source we could put plumbing down there, or is it similar?
It does, it does have to.
No, it is. It's wa- it's water sewer.
It's totally plumbed in, the sewer and mine.
Okay.
Goes right to the septic. It's an, it's a nice facility if we can keep it going. And the first year, it worked really well, and then the second year was...
Second, first year after it worked really well, we didn't winterize it and go on a prime system. We've been, we've been starting since then.
I think there's something that's doable as far as a building down there that would fit the floodway. I really do.
It's expensive. It's way over what you would expect.
So, I can provide the, I can provide what the state sent me, but it was some kind of astronomically stupid idea. It's, we did a lot of research on this, dealing right with the state, with what we could put in the flood. It's not the flood zone, it's the floodway. This is why we can't rebuild our town barn where it sits, because it's in the floodway.
Which is good, 'cause it shouldn't be there.
Yeah, I can provide. I think I still have those emails. I can pull those in. It, it was very, it would be onerous.
It was a lot.
But I'm not, I, I saw that, that bathroom, the first year, worked fantastic.
Yeah.
We had some problems that we may not have caught up on, and to Joe's point, when someone goes and throws a rock through a window, I don't care what you have down there, they're gonna throw a rock through a window. With, with the better lighting and everything, we can probably take it. But I'm not ready to give up on having a nice, 'cause when it was there, handicap accessible and everything else, it was...
Is, I mean, is the build, I haven't been down there.
I just think it, it needs to be more on our radar. When it breaks down, we need to fix it. Just because you don't do anything for eight months doesn't mean it can't be fixed. It means you didn't do anything for eight months.
I mean, who's, I mean, who's maintaining it and cleaning it?
Yeah. Well, that's exactly it. We had, um, Nicole Rice, who was the previous rec director, she was, 'cause she was in the area all the time with her kids, so she would clean it and she would let us know if something was wrong. Um, she left and we got the new rec director and he wasn't, I mean, he's paid ten thousand dollars, he's not paid to clean the toilets. So, yeah, that's, volunteers get us there, but sometimes you don't have...
And if we have someone who comes in and cleans, janitorial services are just that. If they come in and they're doing, then that's on the list, to the point that folks were making, it's gotta be a priority.
And it's a limited engagement too, because one little clean, one little bathroom trailer is not a lot of work.
Oh, and it...
And I've actually already set that up. I actually talked to him today, and he's gonna start this weekend. This way, we'll have eyes on it too. It's not just, like, when something breaks down, we can see, like, something's fine.
I've been taking a ride down there in the evening late, just, and I have yet to find anybody there, but you could be there...
Only takes once.
You could be there, and then five minutes later, something can happen.
Being a terrorist, you only gotta be right once.
Right.
Where we have to be right every time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, that was the next point. Got a cleaning service heading down to the restroom trailer. The twenty, the fiscal year 2022 audit is complete. I have some questions with, for the auditor. They'll be at the next meeting, which is the eighth. Um, we've started pulling documents for the fiscal year 2023 audit, and the auditors are in town on August seventh, so that, that's spinning right up. Uh, Ed didn't wanna brag, but, uh, the guys have been out and they've really been busting their butts lately, um, besides just the potholes. Um, they've been doing a lot of brush cutting, uh, mowing, if you guys were out, the mower, roadside mowers out. Um, and Ed, he's been, he's been doing a good job taking care of the equipment. He's out there grea- he's under there greasing all the equipment, and I saw him the other day. I went down just for a visit. He was replacing some brakes and brokers on the back of the, uh, I think it was the five fifty. So, um, the guys are doing a good job keeping care of their equipment. They, they appreciate that, that the equipment's in good shape and they wanna keep it that way. Uh, for the transfer station, I made a big deal about this, was it last time? Or the time before? Uh, I'm not sure if I brought it up last time, but we did start a daily checklist for the guys at the transfer station, just kinda keep them on track of, uh, what needs to be done. Uh, I did a spot check on Friday, you know, the day after they were open, and they did a good job. It was, everything was done, just like the checklist said it was supposed to be.
There's, uh, one thing to say about that. I was down there Thursday, had a long talk with them. The place looked immaculate compared to...
Much better.
Way, way better, and I told them so. Very nice. Um, we hashed over some ideas as to how we could make that better for not a lot of money, step in the right direction, stopgap measure. And I think we should get our heads together and do something about that, so.
Keep those guys involved.
Trailer park update. We had a, we had a hearing with, uh, the probate judge on, yesterday. Uh, let me see. Uh, the administrator has been in touch with, with the former administrator, um, though she's still looking for some information from, from the former admin. So, uh, it's a slow process. We're kinda bushwhack, when I say we, I mean, the new admin. She's bushwhacking her way through the, the red tape, trying to get all the paperwork together to move forward. It's not been easy, um, but she's working with the courts to get there. And that's, that's the best I can say about that. There's not been a lot of movement. And Murp Grant. I did start that project, and we talked about that earlier. So, that's all I have for you.
Questions? Downtown sidewalk grant discussion.
Yes. So, this is the discussion we had the last two meetings. Uh, we need, we need some information from the board to move forward. The first is about the sidewalks, let me see, sidewalk, and if we wanna do the, uh, herringbone hash, and if you wanna do a colored cement. I did pull some numbers, very, these are very preliminary numbers. These are not hard by any means. But adding color, adding color and a herringbone finish adds about twenty-two percent just for that portion, just that side portion of the, uh, which will amount to about fifteen thousand dollars increase.
Which would come out of our top, right? We would have to pay a lot. Out of there wouldn't...
Well, it would be part of the project. I don't think it, I don't, I think they will make that part of the project. So, it'd be a eighty-twenty split. So, whatever that comes to.
And realistically speaking, fifteen is probably conservative, fifteen to twenty-five thousand by the time the project goes and things happen, just to...
Now, is there an option just for colored and not herringbone at all? Not, or is, we don't have that option?
I don't, I didn't have the, uh, I couldn't break it out, and he couldn't break it out for me, 'cause he got these numbers from somebody else. So, but, I mean, if you're, if you, conservatively, I mean, maybe that'd be, what, twenty percent for just color?
I, I talked to someone and they said that they, they were told, if someone does the concrete, that they, about with color, a hundred and fifty, uh, per square, and I see with the herringbone and the color, it was one sixty-five here. So, that's, and I think that's, that's probably about right. They did both, the stamping and the color for one sixty-five.
What's your pleasure, folks?
I wanna hear from other folks. I have a tendency to jump in too soon.
I, oh, no, you spoke first.
Um, I, I, I'm, I'm stuck in this, uh, limbo between, um...
I, I, I'm, I'm stuck in this limbo between not wanting to increase the cost of the project and also not wanting to look at a sea of cement. Out there. And it might, the color and the herringbone design break it up a little bit, look more enticing to folks, and honestly, it's, it's gonna last. Probably a long time, I'd like to think so, when were those sidewalks last done? Probably well before my time on earth. Later than that.
They're in the seventies. The seventies, seventies, but it's still.
In the sixties, part of downtown was slave sidewalk.
It, it's a very long-term decision for, for us to make. I, I'm curious what other folks think about a fifteen thousand dollar increase. At least fifteen.
Sure, obviously, I'm a little bit, it, it's, it's hard for me, because again, we're seeing potential, the, the colors that may be there, because those, these are not, this is not the final material. And so, things may change. And like Chad said, this is, I mean, what are we looking at right now, Joe, 2025, when these would go in, these, did this?
You know what, it, good question, so the state pushed back paving, class one paving to 2025, so this project will be pushed out to 2025 to coincide with that.
And, you know, as we've learned, unfortunately, these things, costs go through the roof. And so what we may think is a fifteen or twenty-five thousand dollar investment right now, may easily be thirty-five by the time we see it again. And I understand that the state is, is picking up eighty percent of it, but still that's money out of our pockets, and so right now, as it stay, I mean, I mean. Are we obligated to give them this, this spec now, or is it something, because again, it's. I mean, if you're asking, I mean, if you're asking what my opinion is at this very moment, what decision I'd make, I don't think I can support, support it, you know, I, I just don't think that the money. I think that we obviously have needs for money elsewhere, and, you know, even three, four, five thousand dollars may help solve those problems. And quite frankly, I don't think, yes, I don't like cement either, but at the same time, I've seen the plans and they seem to have other features in them that might distract from that. And I don't think it's going to be any more attractive to the, the general public if we have herringbone in, and I think, I think it's just a, you know.
Well, I think we've got a lot of them name plaques, as Black said, we've gotta replace, so that's gonna break up quite a lot of this cement also.
The board said to put those under the trees.
You're gonna have enough, you're gonna have enough spacing?
Under the tree, what, what tree?
Trees that are in the park.
Yeah, in the triangle. Triangle. That's what we talked about last.
All of them will be in that triangle under the tree?
Well, there's something like eleven trees, right now there's five, five or six trees.
Well, we could actually sell more.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I know we've, we've been kind of kicking this down the road, do you want us to go ahead and, and have someone make a motion now and just, just to?
Wouldn't hurt my feelings.
Okay. All right, I will move that the board decline the colored and patterned cement.
A second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
All right, makes sense to me.
So, is there anything else we need to deal with in the sidewalk at this point?
There was one other, that other picture.
Yes.
I'm gonna bring up the, the design for the board, just so we can.
While you're bringing that up, I found that it was helpful seeing those pictures, I know when Jason brought this up two weeks ago, I'm saying, I'm going, yeah, yeah. About these pictures here, to get an idea of what they were talking about.
Right, and that's, I mean, and, and I'll, I'll tell you Glenn, when I saw this rendering, it was completely different than I imagined from what we had before. So I mean, when I saw that, I could not have imagined this.
Oh, let me see if I got one of the trees on it.
Okay, you're bringing that up versus this one here.
Yes, I'm bringing up this, this way you can think of, think about a hardscape as opposed to the grass.
While you're bringing it up, just to move, when I looked at the pictures that came out, I automatically went to the left, to my left top side, to the one with the, the little umbrellas, the tables, and I said. Well, that's closest to what, probably we're, we're going to have versus what they showed the rest of it.
Okay, that's where I was drawn to as well.
This is, this is the rough outline, there is, right now there's a path that comes across, and then there's a path, another path that comes across here with a, with a hub in the middle. With the trees and there's some flower beds here, but, so I guess the question is, do we, what does the board wanna do?
And the original design that we're looking at showed grass in this area here other than the paths?
Yeah, exactly right, it's entirely grass, I think there were a couple of flower beds scattered around, a couple here and here.
Go for it. That makes sense to me.
Well, well, there was some, there was concern that came out, right, that first mowing, and I'm going, you're probably not gonna put a mower in there, someone's gonna go in with a weed or something, but it's, it's not, nothing, you're gonna put a, put a mower in there. And really, did you want green, I thought, were you looking for more green space?
Yes.
Or were you looking to have cement, because that really answers your question, I, I know where, I know where you're coming, but I, when I looked at it and the concern, and I'm just trying to say what the concern was they, they gave back to us. They were worried that because of such high traffic, we would get mud in, in there, and I'm going, wow, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to visualize that much.
Not with traffic.
Traffic, with, with walkways.
It, it doesn't help the backgrounds in these renderings, I think is Detroit, so, you know, this is most certainly not fair even. Have you noticed that? Look at the one with, with the green space in the background, it's like a, it's like an alley of skyscrapers in the background.
We're not gonna have that.
I know, this one.
More green space we can put, Rosie Binloo was here and wondering why we're doing this when we have a private cross the road, why not? I mean, a little extra green didn't hurt anybody, it doesn't hurt anybody's feelings, kind of the wave of the future, the cooler you can make a town, the better.
Well, true, but I, I think that maybe, at, at some point it's gonna come down, do we put the extra green space on Main Street, or we put the extra green space down on the fields, so.
And I, and I'm looking at, usually I look at the colors and says, if I've got, is it cheaper to put grass or concrete?
It's maintenance, it's maintenance.
And, and then the maintenance that's associated with it, which one's the cheapest one to go with, and I, I made an assumption, may not be right, that grass was.
Grass is probably cheaper to put in, but you, but you don't have, you don't have to mow the concrete every two weeks, you know, so.
Now, if we did go with a, an urban cityscape, I don't know what we're calling it, we would lose those trees, correct?
The trees that are down there now.
No, no, the trees that they were.
They show potted, right, they show cheese, don't show any trees on any of this, it's a potted plant that you.
Yeah.
Move the pot around a little bit, I, I guess, I mean, I.
Okay, well, I mean, you guys could, so like the bottom right corner, there's a little eatery space with, with trees in it, so I mean, you wouldn't necessarily lose the trees.
Where, where will that be? I just, I, I think about how the trees have fared.
They don't.
That are in or were in the sidewalk previously.
That was a mistake.
Like, I'd hate to lose the ability to put trees in that space. But I also don't wanna make it impossible to, to upkeep.
Right. And depending on what trees you're using these, if you're putting a tree, you know, a arboreal feature into a concrete plaza, you run the, there's also the risk that depending on how the root growth is. You end up having to make concrete repairs, so, I mean, it probably would prove us to put something in like a big pot, or something that is, is small, or, or can be moved around.
And we have, I, I try to look and say, what have we done, what, what do we know? Well, we've got two tables that are, we have some tables sitting out there now, how's that working out, because there isn't any grass there now, it's all concrete. I, I look at it, I'm going, when I look at it, drive, I haven't gone and sat at the table, yeah, but I mean, when I look at it, when I'm driving by, I'm going, hmm. Shade comes, comes to mind, depending on the time of day, that, so you definitely need the umbrella type thing, and, and it, and, and probably in a table, even if we do the dwarf trees, you still wouldn't have shade. Uh, and, and we look, but I'm saying, I look at what I'm, what's down there and saying, when I look at this right here, it looks like it's gonna be about, we have one-third of the space, it's, this is probably taking up. So I went, I, so I'm trying to say, okay, it's enlarged out like that, but once you enlarge the tables out, what would you like to see? I personally think not having, even though solid concrete is going to build up heat and all that. In the wintertime though, cause I, I still go, okay, you're gonna be using this probably from late April, if you're lucky, to mid-September. Maybe you might get into October, middle of October, when the snows come, November through the end of March. Have we picked up the tables so that you, so are.
They're pretty permanent.
Or are they sitting right there?
Can be what you want.
But, 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 but I'm, I'm just trying to think in terms of, okay, the snow is gonna come, the main sidewalk has to be open, the way today is the, you know, in front of your business, you, you. If you shovel it on out, then we come in where we pick up the snow, right now with the bugling, well, you're not gonna have that ability, that, you're not gonna shovel this. You're gonna carry it around or through to the street to be picked up, right? I, that's why.
You're overthinking it, Glenn.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just trying to think back from folks were saying, what are the concerns, when we, I want that to be successful, that corner with the tables. I don't want, I, and the whole idea was to help our businesses by having that. If we took and made it a, a, a very large chore to clear their sidewalks, because people are still in walking and getting it. I, if, if I didn't put grass, I'm just talked myself out of grass, by the way, just so you understand, because then, cause I'm looking at the tables that are sitting there and going. Boy, those, those tables that, that, like, we still would have the dwarf trees and everything else, well, if we're gonna put the names and everything, probably not gonna plow, you don't wanna plow over the top of them anyway.
Probably shouldn't ever be plowed, to be honest with you.
Just the pathway.
Just the path and let it melt naturally.
They said there's a, there's a pathway here, but there isn't one that goes this way?
Yes, there's one that comes, come here, and then there's one that goes across like this.
That, that aren't in the sketch.
Rendering in, in that?
I don't, not at all, it's no idea, but let me, you know, let me look and see what I got here. No, I don't, that's it.
No, no, okay.
The whole idea, the whole idea now is, first of all.
It doesn't have the trees either.
It's traffic calming first, so we, we were gonna do this, and then the next end of it is the environmental, environmental end of it, and the. Global climate change end of it, where any place you can put green space, you do for cooling, and with the trees and.
Until the urban question came up, I was fine with grassing it, and I'm still not against it, I'm just going, okay, why do, why does the state feel so. That we are making a mistake if we put grass there, so causes.
I didn't get that, the state, the state.
I don't know if they would say it was a mistake, they were just, they were just, their big concern was, was maintenance, just like at every, like the stamped concrete, that's what we're, we're dealing with now, was maintenance for the future. When we had talked about, when we were talking with the state, we had mentioned that we have people seating, we have seating out here, and that we would like to see more seating there, and they said, well. If there's seating, then you're gonna have people there, and if it gets muddy, then a lot of seating is gonna create traffic, and traffic's gonna create mud, so maybe we should just send do something more urban-y. So, but the, the project was to add green space, so they're, like I told them, I said, why would we do anything if we're just gonna add more concrete?
And, and that was, when people ask me about this right here, green space is usually one of the reasons I give for, I think, so if you take that away, then I come back and say, well, why am I doing it?
So the first couple of years I worked here, we did magic shows down here in the corner, cause we were trying to bring business to the corner. And if you're out there, I don't know if you've ever spent a whole lot of time out there, about five o'clock, but that sun comes up over, it's going down over the park, and it, it destroys that corner, I mean, you can't spend any time there. So it is, and it's very unwelcoming, who wants to sit out in the middle of the blazing sun in August? So, that's kinda what the idea was, was to kinda cool that corner down and make it more, uh, do we need a motion?
So you need a motion, that, that's what I would say.
Not, yes, but I mean, I don't think it was an all or nothing idea, like, would the board be interested in doing, like, a little bit, like, a little bit of concrete where the, where we have our restaurants now? You know, maybe cut that corner off and make space for seating, or cut this edge off and make space for seating.
Wherever the seating is, should definitely be concrete.
Where the table is, the table will sit on the concrete, I'm just saying.
Definitely be concrete, cause they're right about the mud, the grass is gonna die, it's gonna rain, they're gonna sit, it's gonna make muddy. I'd love a spot for green in the middle with a couple of trees, and when they bough the snow off the sidewalks, it boughs to that area and it's left until spring, it melts on itself.
That makes sense.
That's what you have to look out for, maintenance, you know, and that gives you.
People gotta get used to the fact that we need green.
You need that, what I'm saying.
And so you have to live with what might happen, you can't just say, what we do know is every time you put concrete in, you heat something up.
That's why I'm saying, add the.
I'm sorry, we took the green out of the sidewalk part, but.
That's what I'm saying, have a good spot in the middle with some green and a nice tree, two or three nice trees even, just so there's some nice shade for cooling. And have your designated little seating areas where the tables are gonna be, that's concrete.
Jason, I, I'm looking at your face saying, what do you think?
My problem is this, is again, I, I think that we are able to do what we just did, which is say we will not use this feature, but the problem is, is that as, at the, the renderings we have now. They're not, they don't conform the actual space, and I think that we could probably, we should, we need renderings and say, okay, this is what we're going to see. Right now, I mean, we're just assuming that, and, you know, I, I'd like some, some clarity as to that, and I don't, I don't wanna kick this down the road, but is there any way that we can get renderings? Where these features are plugged, they're three-dimensional renderings that are plugged into the spaces?
If we could do that and just, so we could sit here and juggle a little bit.
Right, exactly, and that, and that way we can move things around and we can, we have a better idea, but right now, from this, I mean, I have no idea what anything we're discussing will look like, I really.
Well, yeah.
How wide is the sidewalk closest to the buildings in this rendering?
I, like, I, I'm not good at reading blueprints, but I'd assume around fifteen feet. This, this.
Yeah.
Well, it's more than that, I thought, I don't know, actually, that's a good question.
Wide, the width of the sidewalk along the building, I'd say about eight, eight to nine feet, maybe.
Currently or?
Seven or eight.
Or where it will be.
Currently.
Right, it's pretty. I guess my, my question would be, can we, rather than losing green space, cause I don't want, I don't really wanna do that, but if we could make that sidewalk portion in the corner. At least large enough or wide enough to have at least cafe-style tables that would help the businesses. But also maintaining the integrity of the original intent of the plans.
That would work.
That's what I would, that's what I.
It would be.
Are you thinking like some, just, like, from this corner, just like a strip of concrete that comes out that extends the sidewalk?
Put the little, the little tables with two chairs, then what do you mean, part of the?
Official debt permit last year, wasn't, didn't we have to have five foot of clear walk space, was it five feet between the table and the building?
You had to get, you had to have a, a way to get between the.
Had to have a way to get through.
So the sidewalk was open to.
So what I'm saying is.
It has to be at least three feet for eighty-eight.
Say that the sidewalk was designated at six feet, and beyond that's where the tables sit, and then. And then beyond that would be your green space.
That would be, that would be perfect, because there'd be no adjustments. Because the sidewalks are already eight feet, three feet for sitting, five feet for walking.
Let's see if we can get some plug-and-play program.
Yeah, I mean, if you had, I mean, oftentimes what you can do, it's with most, with other design projects, you have it like on a little iPad or something, you can kind of move things around and visualize it, but, I mean, again, it's, I, I don't think that, I mean, I can't vote on anything, any design, I can't vote to add design features when I don't know what they're going to look like.
So, uh, we can get renderings, renderings are expensive, that's the reason we don't do renderings.
I'm saying, get a program, we'll play with it. Do the program, and it'll just look at the computer and it'll go, we can do that.
I mean, does the, does the, the architect have any three-dimensional models of what it's going to look like, other than kind of this generic thing? No?
You gotta pay for, you gotta pay, and I've asked for renderings, and they, it's, it's just expensive. It's always on a shoestring.
May, may I make a suggestion that, perhaps, when you have some time, you could explain to them what our dilemma is here, and that we're, we are trying to make decisions, but we can't actually see what it looks like. Um, and, you know, can they suggest, I mean, maybe, you know, I don't know, flip the two-dimensional picture over so we can, you know, look at it from, from that perspective? And so...
We'll figure something out.
Is, is there a class at Castleton University that does this kind of thing? Like, could drawings?
I'm going to talk to someone.
Or even at the high school?
Yeah, there probably is, and I'm going to talk to somebody at work.
And even, even from the standpoint of...
If I still have a job.
Because I remember our, our teacher...
We're, we're looking at a little, little piece in the corner of a sketch, can they blow that thing? Even, even if I had that thing blown up, so that I can see, even if we can, can go in, doesn't cost a thing for us to go in it, and, and to scale, we blow that thing up, say, okay, we're going to add three feet, so let's put, let's, let's take this blown-up sketch, and show what we just were talking about. I think, this one here, just blew that up so we could, I just want to see this better, so I can, to scale, look at, what's the distance? Do we, can we even put the additional footage there, or are they showing the tables too close for the wider?
I missed it, where'd you go?
Right there.
Yeah, I mean, we can make that bigger or smaller, but I will, uh, will ask D and K how much for renderings, I will look into, let's see. I'll look into Castleton for renderings, I'll ask the contractor for the cost of renderings. And I will look into a program to make our own.
Would you send me that?
Right, I, I don't, right, I don't want this to be one where it is your, your, your top priority and major thing to do, uh, because it, it, to me, this, this, these years out there, it shouldn't be a top priority, it takes up most of your time to go get what we're asking for on this.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to table the rest of that discussion, we're not going to do anything with the sidewalk and the concrete. And we will revisit. Okay, new business. More purchase for the cemetery, nobody got that paper, or the place right there?
Put a backstory on, on this mower. This is the 2009 Scag, and Nate told me there's $3,600 on it. I don't, that, that number doesn't mean a ton to me, I don't know if that's a lot or not, but he says it is.
It's a lot.
This will be the third time that the, the drives have failed on this, each, each hydraulic drive is $900. Typically, they go in pairs, like right now, one's working, the other one is, is not, but typically, it'll, the second one fails, you know, sooner rather than later. Instead of dropping another $1,800 into the repair, since this will be the third time, we're requesting that the board approve the use of $5,200 to buy a new thirty-six-inch Scag mower from R and D, R and D out of Castleton.
Can, do you know what Scag stands for, I'm just curious?
It's a, it's a brand.
It's a brand.
Yeah, it's a brand, but can I, my only question when I saw this right here too, was, back, I thought over a year ago, we were ordering a Scag mower from Youngs. Youngs, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking over, now, did, Youngs went out of business. We, they didn't order our Scag mower, we were going to go and look, did we ever get that Scag, or is this an additional? Because that mower was never bought.
Yes, once it was, they bought, it ended up being bought from Salem Farm Supply.
So we did get it.
We got a Kubota instead of a Scag.
That's the, see, see, I'm, that's why when I was asked about a new Kubota, and I says, what new Kubota, it's the first I've heard of a Kubota.
That's the new mower that, uh, this began on.
We went and bought a Kubota instead of the Scag, so this is, and what I was really looking for is, is this the Scag we were supposed to buy a year ago, is this a different new mower?
This is a different new one.
Okay.
It's a smaller machine.
I, I see the fifty-two...
It's cemetery.
For the cemetery.
For the cemetery.
Hundred percent for the cemetery.
And it looks like they've got the money in there.
They do.
That we don't need to come up with new monies, or I think it's sitting in...
They were the cheapest price, I see you had a price from Salem Farm Supply.
They did.
Salem was off a couple of months.
That, uh, that was a misprint, I think, in that paper that you sent out, it was, uh, Salem Farm Supply was Scag also, but they don't handle Scags, is that...
They don't, um, I said the same thing, um, they said this Scag from Salem would come from a different store. Don, Donny's store doesn't work with it.
Other stores do?
But the other one does, that, I asked the same question.
We necessarily have to buy a Scag, or is there a brand we could put this?
It's a, there might be, but it's a, it's, you're going to do a lot of work, that's what the contractors use to do the ones. That's the one that'll handle the, the work you do, they, they...
They're proven quality.
Are there any anticipated large equipment needs upcoming?
Always.
Always.
So, yeah, the answer is always, uh, we've been limping the backhoe along, the one that's sitting up at the transfer station. Uh, but Nate and I talked about that, to, when did you bring that truck back, yesterday? He was telling me, we just put a new cylinder on it, but we just, I let him know, we just bought a $270,000 truck, so there's not going to be a new back, I won't bring a backhoe to the board. It's, we'll just fix what we got.
So, what is the quote, for how much?
$5,200 from R and D Automotive.
Five thousand two hundred?
I make a motion that we buy that for, for the cemetery.
I second that, they do, they do a heck of a job, the people we have working down there, we got to give them.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Just curious, does that have any other use than simply mowing the cemetery, could it be used on other projects as well?
It could be, but I think they probably will spend most of their time on the cemetery.
But the possibility is there?
Yeah, you could get it, like, you could put it on a truck and maybe take it to the ball field if you needed it in a hurry, you know, that kind of thing like that, but it's going to spend most of its life.
That's another discussion we can have down the road too, just, you know...
Do they, do they need a loan?
You know, if they...
Well, the problem is, is having help.
That's correct, they may have to increase the help a little bit, hours, so they could take a day from the cemetery and go ball, the ball field. For a couple hours or something.
Okay.
All right, we got a motion on the board, down on the floor, all those in favor?
Wait, 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 we have discussion.
Um, can the motion be amended to approve the use of $5,200 from the DPW Equipment Reserve Fund?
I don't see why not.
Thank you.
You good with that?
I'd move to amend the, the motion on the floor.
Second to that.
Second to that?
Everybody understand what we're doing?
Yep, taking it from the DPW.
Approving $5,200 from, from the DTW, DPW's reserves to buy this.
Scag.
Scag.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, but to let you know, there's...
Did you vote on the amendment, or the whole motion?
Yeah, we did.
Well, Bob, Bob's rule is a order.
There is $76,000.
Rich made the emotion, the motion as amended by, by Jason, and I second it.
Close enough for government work, small government.
Planning Commission member reduction.
Reduction request.
So our, our friend, Deb Langkona, she, she submitted her resignation to the, to the board. Uh, that brings the Planning Commission down to five now, I think we lost two, Dave Amy has passed away.
Passed away, and Deb Langkona.
And Deb has stepped down. Which, Mr. Adams came and he said, it's going to be hard to make a quorum if there's only five, so, he's asked that the Planning Commission be reduced from seven members to five members for now, until more volunteers show up.
And, and a year ago, or two years ago, we went from five to seven, because we had a lot of people interested, but five is, just for, five is usually what the Planning Commission runs at.
I guess my only thought is, perhaps, now that Deb just left, she, she just resigned recently, perhaps, maybe we should take two weeks and find out if there's any interest, and then...
I, I kind of agree with you.
And then if there's not, then we can bring this back up again. Because quorum for a seven-member board is, is four. Um, and I'm curious to know how many people, even with Dave Amy and Deb being gone, and how, how many people have otherwise been showing up?
Been fairly good so far.
Okay.
We, it's been good, but we've had a lot of critical stuff, so people have been...
And that's, that's an important committee, and I think it needs as many voices as we can get, so, my, I, I guess, I don't know if we need to move forward, is that we just simply, find out if there's any interest, and then either vote on it again in two or four weeks.
But can you just advertise on the, all our usual places, the website, and everything, and say that there's an opening? There's actually two.
How many, uh, board members are on, on the committee now?
Five active.
No, no, how many, how many selectmen, how many selectmen are on that committee, none?
Me, the chair, the chair.
Right.
So, volunteered in the...
Um, no, I'm just curious.
Well, to be perfectly honest with you, I thought that's where I was going, and I was going to be off this board, but it...
Well, I mean, if, I mean, if you're, I mean, if you need, I mean, if you need to be off the board, then, then that obviously is an important concern, I, I just think we should just advertise it, and then if no one is interested...
We check to the state, I can be on board.
But, but, at the, at the end of the day, the, the thing that's really important to me, is when the Planning Commission, if the Planning Commission is coming, requesting us to change their number to five, because they feel they can be, because we have some important things to do, be more effective, I want to put some serious weight...
Two weeks isn't going to kill it.
I, no, but I want to put some serious weight to what the Planning Commission...
Well, that's, I mean, that's my thought, if, I mean, if we don't have two or three people who pop up and say we're interested, then at that point, there is no...
Yeah, right.
I, I hope some we can go out and check, I hope, what, my, our past experience has been, very few volunteers.
It's, um, it's actually a fairly interesting adventure, I've, I've been thoroughly surprised by that.
We're, we're getting, I, I mean, and I won't labor this, but, but getting a lot of chatter around town about, what's going in on the Indy Airport in Washington, and I love the answers, the Planning Commissioner coming back and says, yeah, where was the site visit a year ago, all the permits and everything else? And now, we've got people saying, hey, what's going on here, and I'm just going, you either pay attention, and get involved, and you'll know what's going on, I don't want to sound like I'm lecturing, but absolutely, that if you, if you really care, we'd love to see you on the Planning Commission, on the Recreation Committee, on, on all of our committees, we'd like to see people.
It just seems there's kind of just, you know, a hesitancy to join, to do anything.
Well, because before you get, before too long, you will be sniped at.
Well, and it's the same eight people that are on every committee, because nobody else will get on pace. That's, I'll stop.
Well, let's go.
I'm a divorce lawyer, there is nothing in the world that anyone could say to me that I have not heard before, absolutely nothing. But no, I mean, I, I mean, I am interested, I mean, if we can get other interests, that's great, but if, if, you know, if we need an extra person, I'm interested in doing that, so...
It's, it's, it's an interesting...
All right, so I guess we're just going to be tabling that, then?
Yeah. Dog report.
Yes, uh, Town Clerk Roberts has submitted her dog report, and I can pass this out. Let me see, attached, there are 227 dogs that have not been licensed this year, that were licensed in past years, so that's quite a few. To date, uh, the clerk says there's 332 dogs registered in Fairhaven. The list will be sent to our animal control officer tomorrow morning to have him go knock on some doors. And this is just for the board's knowledge.
Okay, we don't have to sign up or acknowledge it, it's just...
You know, it's funny, I, I chatted with Danny about that, because it was kind of, it got to, it got to be almost a cliche, when, you know, because sometimes, she's my walking partner, and we'd walk, we'd be walking around, and there, we'd see somebody with a dog, and she'd like, I think that one's unregistered, it's like, I think that one's unregistered too. And then the question I asked her was, well, what can we do about that? I mean, short of, short of sending somebody out there to these, these, you know, homes and, and, you know, politely say, I mean, I, I mean, I can't imagine that we would go out there and take dogs.
And, and we, and have we, and I don't want to sound like I'm making excuses for the people who haven't registered their dogs, mine's registered, by the way. But it's, but have we gone out on our town website and, and said, hey, look, folks, there's, because I think it'd be eye-opening for the 247, uh, folks that are out there to say, there's such a large number, to say, you, you need to get your dog registered, or you will be hearing from the animal control officer if you have one registered last year. It gives the air cover for the animal control officer who, as well, who knocks on the door, and we, we surprise them. Uh, even though I, I get it, there's probably the usual suspects, but I think there's some people who just don't either...
Well, you forget.
You forget, or just, and I'd rather, before I send someone knocking on the door, saying, all right, you're in violation, I don't know what that means, to say, let's get down and see if we can bring that number, uh, that, that's a full-time, 247 people is a full-time job for that animal control officer.
Yeah, how about this idea that just, it just occurred to me, how about we run a raffle? Basically, pay your, pay your nine-dollar dog fee, and you'll be thrown into a raffle for some prize.
Well, you want...
Like a dump sticker in a car or something.
But when you start, when you start coming down to, you know, we're in August right now, we probably have a similar issue with dump stickers.
I, I was just thinking, I was going to channel you.
And here, and, and, and so I'm saying, I'm, I'm chasing the nine-dollar dog, dog registration, and I, I gotta chase just as hard the ten-dollar dump sticker, or I'm not being consistent in my mind, but, it's...
I'm, for, for me, I almost made the list.
Almost.
Um, I, I was definitely late to it, and a, a big part of it is time.
This place was closed when...
Yeah, really not being able to, forgetting, even though Danny was really good at reminding me on a few occasions. For, for me, historically, the, the rabies clinic that we run is the best chance to register. And I couldn't, my dogs didn't need that this year, and I couldn't make it this year, and it was out of my mind, but, uh, really pushing, uh, you know, that event, and, I, I don't know, if, if there's a way to incorporate technology, if we could register online, I mean, I, that's a, that's a dream for another day, but...
Why couldn't that, why can't that happen?
Well, it'll take time to get there.
Run it through to Danny and see what, what the, what the pitfalls are.
I mean, the problem is, the end of the day, if, if we got everyone registered, that we would bring in $2,270, and then, you know, how much is it going to cost us in... And then, you know, how much is it going to cost us in time?
If we're going to spend fifteen thousand dollars getting two thousand dollars in registration fees, I understand. Yep, but I even go a step further to say, I think most people want to do the right thing. I don't, I, I would feel better if we did something to say, hey, folks, we're going to be coming out there. We know who, who we have, we pretty much know where we are. Come on in and register.
Or we could just go, we could go like, you know, aggressively, basically just give Bill a shotgun, have him pull up to every house and knock on the door.
You want to tell you a story?
Oh, no.
So this, but this item right here was to just inform us that you've already made the decision you're sending the animal control officer there. Exactly, exactly. It really is, what I heard when I read this, I'm saying, I don't even know why you're putting it in front of me because there's no decision for me to make. I'm saying, is that, is that how I would have gone about it? No, it isn't, but that's beside the point.
Good, then we will stop talking about it.
Yep, we will. We'll move on.
For now. Ruby, Ruby's Bistro.
Yes. Ms. Langkona is asking for a water allocation for her new bistro. She's asking for six-hundred-and-seventy-five gallons of water. Did I read that right?
Any sewer?
And sewer, both.
Okay.
Four hundred, I'm sorry, four-hundred-and-fifty gallons of water and sewer both.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve Ruby's Bistro's water allocation of four-hundred-and-fifty gallons of water and sewer both.
Second. Questions?
Yes.
Four-hundred-and-fifty gallons of water? That's not a lot. What are we, what are we?
No, I'm sorry, I read that wrong, Rich.
What are we talking about there?
I'm thinking like four-hundred-and-fifty thousand gallons.
No, no, that's GD, that's gallons per day.
Per day. That was gallons per day?
Yeah. I put six-hundred-and-seventy-five.
Rich, I'm sorry, I gave you the wrong number. That was their permanent number. It's, the restaurant is twenty-five seats at twenty-seven gallons a day, which is six-hundred-and-seventy-five gallons for both water and sewer.
Per day?
Per day.
Can I amend my motion?
I would.
I would amend my motion. I move to we approve six-hundred-and-seventy-five gallons of water and sewer per day for Ruby's Bistro.
Second.
Thank you.
I got one more question. Is this standard operating procedure to do this to businesses?
Yeah, they have to ask for the. We, the theory is we have finite amount of water. So we have to make sure that we're not over exceeding what we can provide the service for.
Gotcha.
We're like.
We've got plenty of water. In case anybody's looking to move to Fairhaven, we got plenty of water.
It's probably, sewer is probably at sixty, last time I heard, sixty or sixty-five percent. So there's all kinds of capacity there. If we were sitting here and a big business was coming in wanting all kinds of water and we were up in the ninety percent, we would have probably a lot more discussion.
Everybody understand what we're doing?
They do now. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The other thing too, it's probably a state, that six-hundred-and-seventy-five is probably a state mandated number for a restaurant or per table. Like in, for a building, for a house, they count that. All right, sidewalk policy. It's like twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth?
It is twenty-fifth. Just, just me?
I think it's just the one, Dave?
Yeah, just the one.
Sidewalk policy, which is there, you should have papers on that?
Something, I've never, so I've only been here for the six years, but this year we've had a lot of, I've had a lot of people asking me about sidewalks. Never before has this been so many people asking me, when are we going to fix the sidewalks? Nate had somebody ask him too recently, I think on Second Street, about this, about the fifty percent, paying the fifty percent of the project. I never could find that in the, in our policies and procedures anywhere. I know we've talked about it, but.
We have always done that.
So I actually, so I put it in the policy and I was wondering if the board wanted to, you know, codify it and make it real.
What's your, what's your pleasure?
Can I just answer a question? Because when I saw that fifty percent, I'm trying to visualize what that actually would look like. For example, pick a street with the one with the slate sidewalk that's buckling and everything. Is it first, first coming down to Kinarvin out there? Maybe I'm, I think it's first coming to Kinarvin. There must be, what, eight to ten houses down on the side. Two people in the middle say, I want my sidewalk done and I'm going to pay fifty percent. I got slate down, cement and slate down at the end is what this policy says we would do?
You've done it before, you've done it a lot.
But I'm, but I'm just saying, to me, I'm going, I don't want to do that. I want, if that street needs to be done, we ought to.
Do the street.
Do the street. Now, that's if I'm putting a new sidewalk. I'm trying, I'm, this is just trying to use an example if I followed the policy. Front of my house on Dutton Avenue, there's a, there's a square piece of sidewalk that is shifted down a little bit. I don't need the whole, it's already cemented. If I wanted to fix that, I would come with this new policy as I read it and saying, Joe, I'd like to fix that. Is the town going to pay, because they have an option, fifty percent? And I'll pay fifty percent and I'll fix that and you'll have a nicer looking old sidewalk the rest of the way. But I'll have a nice new square sidewalk. I'm looking, going, I could see where that piece of fifty percent would work. I don't know, I'm up on Academy Street, South Side, let's go to South Side. Coming down Academy, that old slate and grass, slate and grass, slate and grass down through there. Somebody, the Eagles, say, I want a new sidewalk. I'll pay fifty percent. We do cement down to just where their, where our property starts. I'd like to think the town would do theirs, so we'd go a little, we'd make it about halfway. And then if the owners down there don't, you know, you think, you want to put a new sidewalk in, that's just fine. But I'm not going to pay you, I'm paying you fifty percent for that right there. That's, is, am I, is that what this is saying?
Yes. If, I mean, you have the option to do it or not do it.
That's what it is.
So those, to use the example of the first street with the two homes right in the middle and they put sidewalk in and another slate out here.
Yeah.
Yes, that's exactly what it is. Now, the town has the option to do the rest of the sidewalk. But the way I, the way I imagined this was it's incentivizing people. It's like, well, I can get a nice sidewalk, it costs me half price. And then maybe the neighbor does the same thing because that looks great.
I think the reality is going to be, I've got a terrible sidewalk, why isn't the town doing anything about it?
Why isn't the town fixing my sidewalk? I pay enough taxes.
What has, what has happened in the past is more people, more affluent people want a better sidewalk in front of their house, so they did. And their sidewalk may not have been scheduled to be fixed forever and so they fixed it. And we built to it.
But they put a sidewalk on the town right away. Again, I come, I come back and say, that's, every time I looked at this, I'm saying, that's ridiculous in my mind.
So what do you want to do?
I don't want the fifty percent.
Let me ask you this. If someone comes to you and says, okay, I want a new sidewalk, here's my fifty percent, are we obligated at that point to build or not?
Or to pay them?
There's a, there's a proverb that we reserve the right to make that decision.
To say, to say no.
I didn't see it as like the town manager making that decision either. I felt like it'd be like the, I'd bring it to the board and say, does the.
Well, right, but I'm saying, if that was, if that was what was said, what was asked for.
Yeah.
So we're not, we are not obligated to build up the sidewalk even if they pay the fifty percent?
When I read this, I don't look at it as an incentive. I look at it as the town not wanting to put sidewalks in and trying to get people who already pay pretty good taxes to put sidewalks in. And I'm going, no.
That's not what it.
Well, that's, that's how I read it.
How it, it just was.
And I think.
The way it was always done. And don't ask me, don't ask me how it got started, I have no idea. But if somebody wanted to put a sidewalk in front of their house, we always split it with them because it isn't a town right away. And frankly, more affluent people did it and people that didn't, didn't.
I think about like, I think it's Fourth Street. You got a sidewalk on the south side of Fourth Street. And after the Dutton Ave intersection, the sidewalk on the north side of Fourth Street isn't there. I could see this benefiting some folks who, hey, there's not a sidewalk on my side, but I'd like a sidewalk in front of my house.
Well, I think that would. And you see, most of those people probably have an asphalt driveway as well. Who knows? I mean, what's, what's your pleasure?
I don't, if we, when we have affluent people, like, I agree, the affluent people want to put in there, they can afford to put their sidewalk in, they don't need fifty percent from me. I don't want to put fifty percent of my money into the sidewalk on Fourth Street.
Well, it happens to be, it becomes the town's.
If this was a.
If it's an important sidewalk, how to put it in?
Oh, it doesn't.
This policy is already in effect, correct?
Except for the fifty percent, we couldn't find that. It's just been more of those stupid tradition things that has gone on forever.
That's, it's, what's being added is the fifty percent piece into here.
Yeah, just so sidewalk improvement incentive, everything south of that is added. So we'll take that out and that's your sidewalk policy.
While we're looking at this, when I looked at the next one up, because.
Well, wait a minute, let's finish this one first.
We're looking at the whole policy, aren't we?
Yeah, but if we're going to, if we're talking about this, do we want this in or not? If we want to take this out, let's, consensus of board is.
I'm only one vote. I don't want it in.
I hear what you're saying, bud. But I think it's a way for us to start improving our sidewalks at a reduced cost. If you think about it, if you could get three or four in an area to do it, then maybe three or four more will do it. And then maybe we'll end up with just one or two sections that we have to pay for ourselves totally. Sooner than you think, the whole street's done.
Again, I, when we can't get people to paint their house, I'm worried and we're worried, we're worried about a piece of fifty percent.
Give us an idea of how much it actually costs to replace sections of cement sidewalk. We're not talking, this is not chump change. This is a lot of money.
One thing, one thing too to think about is when's, when's the last time we've ever had a proposal come in?
Uh, last week. That's the reason this came up is because somebody asked me, it's like, aren't you paying fifty percent? And I said, I can't find it. So I thought maybe.
So that's the first time in recent memory that we've had one?
In six years, in six years. We're probably spending more time talking about this. I mean, we can, I don't want a policy that's not worth the paper it's printed on. Quite frankly.
I guess my thinking is if someone wants to spend fifty percent on a sidewalk, that we would be anyways. We also have the caveat that we don't have to.
They don't have to, we don't have to.
I mean, they can come to us and propose, I mean, if anything, I don't want to lock us into this, you know, where the fifty-fifty split. I mean, let's do it on a case-by-case basis.
And don't get me wrong, if you guys want to go ahead and do it, I'm only one vote. Go and do it.
If it makes sense, if it makes, I mean, we can say no, we can say fifty-fifty, we can say anything, anything else we want as well.
What it's basically going to say is if the owner, property owner wants to do it and then if the town wants to do their fifty percent, then, and I keep saying, okay, so we're going to put some money aside for the anticipated fifty percent in the sidewalk budget. But I'm, no, you're, go ahead.
No, 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 we do anyway. It's not necessarily for that, but it could.
How much money have we actually got in our sidewalk fund?
We used it all up, I thought, to cover the overage on these park and ride and the sidewalk project.
No, no, there's a little bit there. I want to say there's about fifty thousand dollars over.
And we didn't use the full amount?
Yeah, you didn't use the full amount. There's still a little bit sitting there. I can find it, right?
Well, I don't, you know, we shouldn't spend the rest of the.
So we should, we should try to do some sidewalks then.
I disagree with the need for sidewalk planning, doing sidewalks. I just, going past here that we're already overtaxing to have to pay more.
That's a matter of opinion.
That's my opinion.
It is. That's true. It is, yeah.
Jason in Florida, did you, did you have sidewalks?
We did. And we were, you know, I, I, you know, was the president of my homeowners association. We had to, we had to build them up. The thing was, is when the development was built, the sidewalk, the sidewalk in the Swale area belonged to the association. So there was never any cost sharing because it was our land. And so if we wanted sidewalks there, we built them. That's another question I had for you. Are the sidewalks, are they on our land or are they on?
On our right of way.
We're in the right of way, okay.
On our right of way, we're responsible for it.
Right.
Once, that's, that's the other drawback, you know, towards your area.
I mean, as a homeowner, what would I say? It's like, this is your right of way, you build the damn thing and, you know, it's your responsibility. So, and, I mean, how many affluent people in this town are going to actually undertake something like this?
It used to happen more often. People aren't as well off. It used to happen, there was a couple every other year, you know? It really, it never really was a big deal. And it, it never, you know, but things are different.
You know, I don't think that there's a need for a strict policy on this issue. We can tackle it as we need to.
Like, when I read through the policy, it pretty much is policy reads like, do what you want to do and make a decision each time you come down there. Because I, not only that one, the one above it that you don't want to talk about, where it talks about the, that the new sidewalks, that the new sidewalks should, should be done, it said should be done. What the heck good is an ordinance that says should? It will be, will be done in concrete. I, I'm just saying, when I say this isn't the word the paper it's written on, it's, it's, okay, we might do this, we might not. It all depends. And that's not an ordinance.
Well, it's, no, it's, it's, it's not mandatory, it's more directory. And it basically gives us the freedom to say no and to come up with creative solutions depending on the situation. So, and I'm, you know, I'm always a bigger fan of giving ourselves latitude rather than locking us into a figure. So, I mean, if there's, if the issue is, you know, are we, are we moving to add this sidewalk improvement incentive in to the policy? Is that, is that what's before us right now?
I thought we were reviewing the sidewalk policy.
No, well, yes, but no.
And that's, are we, are we just doing what you added or are we doing the policy?
Well, it was, so we re-adopted this in February of this year. I added the sidewalk improvement incentive because this has come up a couple of times and I never could find the fifty percent. So, I mean, the board can do what you want. But specifically this time, it was for the fifty percent split just because that was something that was never resolved. And it popped back up.
And, and the only reason, again, I'm still going to that paragraph just above it. When it finishes with major repair replacement of significant length, then cement should be used. But we don't spell out, first question, what's the significant length? Twenty-five feet, fifty feet, a hundred feet? I mean, again, I come back to this, you can do what you want. It's a general, basically look at it all of it and make the decision. No wonder you can't, you try, and I'm just looking at it, Bob, I don't want to sound like I'm beating a dead horse. To be consistent, an ordinance should tell you what to do. Hear the rules, follow the rules. I don't see the rules here.
Well, I agree. I think this is not as much an ordinance as a policy, which is kind of more of an informal, you know, way of how we handle.
It is a policy, it is a policy.
And I don't think, and I think that there's really no need to convert it into an ordinance or any, or to, you know, to tighten it up, really. It's basically, okay, we have a couple of occasions where this will come up, come to us, we'll work on a solution together. And if we can't reach a solution, we don't. Because I just, again, when you, when you lock us in to like a fifty-fifty split, that could be, you know.
And the reason, if the reason we're doing this is because someone came and wanted to do it, so what is it that we're, oh, what is it that we're approving? Did they want to put a, a full street sidewalk? Did they want, or did they want to put something else, some fancy thing on our right of way? I just, again, I, I think we're.
Well, it would, it would have to be approved and it'd have to be within state guidelines. Five feet for anti-cap accessibility. I think that's an overrule.
Would, do they have to go to Phil and? Do they have to go to Phil and get a, get a permit?
Sometimes.
From zoning, from zoning? How do you, how do you control?
There's, there's more, there's a lot to it, but yeah, you'd have to follow. You can't put a, you can't put a sidewalk in, a little bitty thing that is not light enough. You have to, you have to have it to spec.
If we say we're going to do fifty, again, I'm just trying to think of how you would do what this is saying. Okay, they came, they want to put a sidewalk in, yeah, we'll do fifty percent. Who's going out to check their spec to make sure it is?
I think that's, I think that's assumed in there, that if we're going to enter into a site, that a municipality entering into a sidewalk project, then it's going to be, it's going to be compliant along.
Someone's going to go out, do the measure there? And I'm saying, do we, and we want to take, at the end of the day, is that what we want to do? And I'm just going...
That more staff, that's more staff. Tell me what you guys want, we are, we are repeating ourselves, this is getting ridiculous.
Okay, I'm going to move, I'm going to move that we leave the sidewalk policy as is with no further additions at this time.
I'll second that.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So that is out.
Yep.
A lot of passion on sidewalks today.
I know. That's all right. It, you make good points, but I'm not arguing that, I'm just like, we...
The policy is not as it's written with.
The pol, there is no, the, 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 there's, there have been no additions to the policy other than what exists.
Because we did, like, the, the part of the policy was on the next page about cutting the brush that's in the way that we have in our right of way. We've used that and it's, that seems to work.
I, I think that probably what is, would be good again, some point is all of our policies and ordinances.
Oh, God, help us.
Do a survey.
Yeah, we started a little bit of that.
It's, it's, it's periodic. It does have to happen. All right, um, parking lot stuff, anybody got any?
And Bob, unless there's something salient, I'm going to move that we table that because I don't know, we have a lot of new information. We've also, and we've already discussed...
I can tell you one thing, the zoning regulations are done.
Okay.
We are now waiting to get transcribed from, from the grant that we got through Rutland Regional. The person, our contact person has left. The director of Rutland Regional is on his honeymoon. So sometime around August fifth or, or, excuse me, August eighth, I will reconnect with them, we'll get that, and we'll come here. We're already going to start on the town plan, assuming everything is cool with that, so. We, you should see, first part of September, I think you should see the, some presentation here. Uh, one thing we did do, and, and we had some good input from a couple of people. And we did do downtown, uh, we've made it, and this will probably be as controversial, right? We made downtown, you cannot have a, a street-level apartment in the front of your building. You can take fifty percent of that, that space on street level, make an apartment in the back, but you can't put an apartment in the front.
Aren't there any structures that would, that potentially violate that?
Well, there was, there was, there was a real chance we were going to have that. And so we wanted to make sure that it isn't. Right now, it's, uh, we voted on it the other night, so it's in the plan. It's just, that's probably the most controversial thing. Anyways, moving on. Board roundtable? Sir?
Yeah, I got, I got a couple of things. First thing is I want to thank whoever trimmed the bush up at Allen and Carver Street. That was a super nice job. Very, very good site to secure now. Yep. So that was, that worked well. So I appreciate that. DBW seems to be doing a great job this year catching up on some of these. They're not leaving the projects open for a long period of time, they're catching up on them. And I, I appreciate that, too. And I also appreciate what they've done down at the town landfill as far as cleaning things up, the transfer station. That's, that's a step in our big, right direction. And then, uh, at the park, we have a couple of tree limbs there that I don't think would take a whole lot to address, but we should do it before the next council. Right there, just a little ways from the grandstand, there's a, there's a couple of limbs that stick down. The taller folks are running into them at night, I've seen that two or three times. There's a couple, couple of, can't miss them. So I was wondering if we could have the, the maintenance guy take a look at that. Maybe tomorrow? Put it trimmed up, if we could.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask him.
Yeah. If I'm around, I could even help him, I, you know, whatever. It's not a big job, it's just, it's just that, I've noticed it about three weeks ago, I should have mentioned it, I flipped my mind. But I'd like to get that squared away. And then, has anybody noticed all the brush on the sidewalk going down the hill from, from the auto store?
Yep.
I mean, we drive by it every day. And I don't know what the deal is there, I don't know if that's being left intentionally or not allowed to clean it or what, but it's a mess.
Sean, please? Yeah, he's supposed to do it tomorrow.
Oh, he is?
He called me up today because he was, he talked to you and, and, uh, I was going to bring that up. He, he, um, he called me afterwards because he wanted to put it out, he used to be able to go throw it out behind the town barn. I said, no, can't do that anymore. But, well, of course tomorrow's the only day he can do it. And I said, well, you're going to have to wait till Thursday to put it, bring it to the dump. I'm not going to come in. That's what you, that's your options. But he's going to, he's going to cut it tomorrow. Supposedly.
Well, that's all I have. Well, there is one more thing.
You lied to us.
I, I, um, I was wondering if, uh, what's, maybe you would tell us, Joe, what's, what's the deal with catching up on these ceilings, getting these tiles back up? Have we got a plan yet? We really need to get that done. I mean, everything else looks really nice right now. We're, we're, we're really coming along pretty good. And it's just a shame to be leaving that for much longer.
So the, uh, the contractor's still adamant that August, the complete project, the project will be completely done in August. Um, he's got his guys coming back on Monday. We actually had a little meeting with him and the boss, him and his boss. Uh, and they're going to try to bang out all of that kind of smaller thing next week. Though I don't have a timeframe for the tiles, that's kind of part of that, that whole process.
At least it's a better answer than I had earlier. Thank you.
Uh, not much to add this week. Uh, I was away in Florida trying a case last weekend. Was involved in a freak accident that put me in the hospital, but I will, uh, it, it's actually somewhat funny, I'm happy to tell you all someday. I'm actually going to be in Rutland Regional tomorrow all day and not able to talk, so I'm sure that makes a lot of people, my, my clients, my opposing counsel, people, exactly. There you go. But I heard that in my absence, apparently we had an issue with the concerts, that Johnny Cash didn't show up? Or did, was it?
Well, that was, that was a couple of years ago.
Was that a couple of years ago?
Johnny, Johnny Cash, Johnny Cash, of course, has died many years ago.
Of course.
Okay, and, and, uh, last year,
Elvis is sick.
Last year, when they were supposed to be here, he ended up in the hospital, so they sent someone else instead, which everybody really liked. This year, apparently he retired unannounced. And no one knew about it until a day or so.
Oh, so it did happen.
But it was a nice concert, everybody had a great time.
Heard lots of good comments.
Lots of people.
No, I, I heard that they sent somebody who was playing June Carter Cash, and she told everyone that Johnny had retired, so...
She wasn't lying. Johnny's gone.
Good, good. Other than that, nothing really to add. Like I said, I am kind of, I, I really have been doing a lot of thinking about the whole rec issue and I hope that we can, you know, delve further into it soon. Other than that, oh, and I'm sure probably some of you heard that Danny Roberts is now a grandmother, her first grandchild yesterday. So, please, see her, please, give her well wishes. Thank you all.
Last meeting, meeting before, chief was in here talking about how he could use some help with code notification, code violation notifications. And the wheels were turning there. I didn't know if that was something that perhaps either health officer or assistant health officer could help out the police department with in the future at some point. But, you know, the, if, if we can, if we can get the police out of some of the tasks that are taking them away from some more important things, I, I think that would be, uh, ideal. That was all.
I actually had somebody call me this, today, that said, I have a baby bird sitting in front of my store. Can you send somebody? I said, no. I said, no, we, we, he says, what about the dog ward? And I said, the dog ward deals with dogs. That was an unpopular opinion to not send an officer down to pick up the baby bird. I feel like it was the right thing to do.
We'll give you that one.
It's funny what people will call for, is what I'm getting at.
Well, you have to ask appropriate questions, is the bird armed?
Are you feeling threatened right now?
Being threatened by the bird.
Really got a really, really mean look on up there.
Does it?
I, I only have one, uh, resident of West Street was wondering when we were going to clean that tree up that we cut and blocked up, uh, in West Street Cemetery. And told him it was on the list, and it was just, we wanted to...
In the cemetery?
It's, it's on the left side, you're going down West Street, where, I mean, it was a pretty good-sized tree. We cut it, we blocked it up, but it's still sitting there, it hasn't been, uh, the wood hasn't been picked up and taken away. It says, just with everything going on with the, the culverts and everything else, we just hadn't got there, but we will. So I just wanted to...
Put a free firewood sign on it, it'll be gone.
I was talking to him, we come in and say, wood, free.
That's exactly, that's, the guys have been, they've been banging away with the rows and the brush and the cutting, and it's just, that's not, it's not hurting too much to just sit there. But we'll get it, we will get it, like the tiles, we'll get there.
That's it? Got a letter from the high, or the grade school, the Apple Fest is, is September twenty-third. In case anybody wants to get involved.
September twenty-third?
September twenty-third. Rain date is the twenty-fourth, the next day. I don't know if you've got one, but you can have that one. No mention. Did you have a, I know you visited, did you have a chance to look into EV stations? There was a, there was a grant floating around someplace from, from Rutland Regional.
Was it the Merck? The Merck does deal with EV stations.
Oh, maybe that's what it was. Yeah, I think, yeah, okay, okay, you already, okay. You want to describe the, the, the letter you sent to, the email you sent to the auditors? So nobody, so nobody gets blindsided?
Sure, so, um, our elected auditor sent me email, uh, sent me a certified letter. I think I must have got it yesterday.
I did get it yesterday.
Uh, requesting a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of documents. They requested that I or the staff produce those documents, make copies and then hand them off to the, to the auditors for them to review. My response was, you can review the documents. Anytime you want, just let me know, anything and everything is, is open to, to review. I said, but our staff is not the secretary of the, of the auditor. So, happy to give you the documents to review, but our staff will not be making mass copies for them to just walk off with. One very onerous task in particular was making copies of every check from the fiscal year 2021. Yeah, it's just, it's too much, my, we have a hard time keeping up with what we're doing now, let alone just spend time...
Isn't our, isn't our auditor on staff that we hire taking care of all that stuff?
Well, these, this is elected, elected positions, and they, they have a statute, state...
I understand, but don't they have that report to work with?
Well, it depends on how it, I, it, they can look at anything they want, anytime. But it, it may not come in the format they want, they can put it in any format they want to put it in. And they can make copies on our copy machine all they want.
Right, generally your obligation is to give them a table to sit down and, and where they can look at the things. You're not obligated to copy them, to collate them, to put them in any order. So that's, that was quite appropriate.
Did, did the letter, when someone sends a letter requesting something, did it say in the letter what their, what their concern was, what?
No, it's fishing, it's...
I was just curious if that was a...
Uh, so we had a young lady come in a few months ago that did, and, she did her own, her own audit.
Her forensic?
Her forensic audit she did. This is in that vein. We want to see all the grant stuff, we want to see all the checks made out, we want to see the vendors from the grant, um, we want to see all the checks from that year. And that's what this is about. Which, happy to provide it, I've done it before, we'll provide it again.
Is, is it, I'm just a question, so, like, checks written in 2021? Is there a computer program where you don't need to actually have a picture of the check? You just print, and a printout gives you that, that they can...
Usually they want to see the actual document, and that's actually, it works out better for everyone involved because it's, they're presumably in a file and you just push it across the table.
Right, and they just say...
Right, because going and pulling a report requires you to actually press buttons on a keyboard and waste your time.
That seems like a lot, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does, it does.
So, so it's like the, those, there, they, we keep, they would just go through what, all those from, yeah, okay.
Boxes and boxes and boxes.
Set the boxes up and they can go through all the boxes.
It's the way, it's the way it should be, I don't think we should spend that much time.
I just, the reason for the question was just, is there, is there some, what, what's, did they give us an idea of what, what they were looking for, so...
Well, I think it has everything to do with, some of, two of those people on that are very conscientious and one of them's plain gotcha. And that's exactly, and I don't care who hears that, frankly. But, anyways. So that's, I just wanted everybody to know that's what, Joe made that decision. I think it's the right one, too.
No, it's absolutely the right one.
Okay, uh, how about some financial reports?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the payroll of forty thousand...
Go.
Uh, approve the payroll of forty thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Make a motion to approve the general warrants of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I believe there was a couple payments in there, so I was a little...
Insurance, Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
Yeah, Blue Cross was a big one. Most of them are pretty small, though, this time it's just...
I can go through this very quickly, but if you have something that you want to question, this would be the time, so just pull it out and...
I'll let you mention it. Curious, uh, is shipping our sludge to Schenectady cheaper than Rutland? Or is Rutland unable to take it?
Rutland was unable to take it to some kind of...
Wouldn't take the sludge.
In fact, I talked to Schenectady today, that, well, should we get a deal down here, no doubt about it, yeah. Killington's actually shipping to Schenectady right now because Rutland's just not taking. So, yeah, it's...
Is that flood-related or are they just overwhelmed?
Uh, you know, I don't know. I talked to Schenectady, so I don't know why they were getting it, I just knew they got it. They got the sludge.
And the checkbook status is six hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and... And the checkbook status is $656,479.25.
Thank you. Okay, executive session.
Motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel...
We are going into executive session as soon, wait a minute, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.